Good evening, everyone. I'm Shannon Rutherford, the town planner. We are going to start this evening with a roll call of members, both for the benefit of everyone here in person and online. Mike Grabulis.
Here.
Matt Hutlogner.
Here.
Scott Halsted.
Here.
Liz Sanford.
Here.
Ina St. James.
Here.
Mike Walsh.
Here.
James Ratcliffe.
Here.
And Matthew Vandal.
Here.
And I'm going to note for the record that Patrick Carrier is not in attendance this evening.
Thank you so much.
Chair, it's all yours.
So, thank you. Welcome, everyone. It's awesome to be back, and I have no idea what's going on with the mic. And I do not have an inside voice, so I guess we are in for fun. All right, welcome, everyone. My name is Ina St. James. This is the Town of Farmington Plan and Zoning Meeting. Today is March 27. We have several new business items we'll be discussing this evening and several public hearing items. The new business items, that portion does not include any participation from the public. Public hearing does. When we get to the portion, I will remind you again, but if you can please state your name and address for the record, we would appreciate it. Try to stick to the topic at hand. We would appreciate it. We're all volunteers here. And we want to do the best job we can for our town and everyone that lives here. All right, let's get this going, Scott, if you can read the legal notice, please.
Absolutely. Notice is hereby given that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold a hybrid in-person and online public hearing on Monday, March 27, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers on the following applications. Gloria and Dale Massey, application for special permit to raise no more than 20 foul at 868 Plainville Avenue, R20, R30 Zones. Town Farm Development LLC, application for modification of conditions of approved special permit for event use at 152 Town Farm Road, R40 FW Zones. Harold M. Wilson, application for special permit for clear cutting and restoration in ridgeline protection area for property located at 61 Eli Road, R80 Zone. BB Development LLC, application for special permit and site plan approval for gas station with convenience store located at 368 Plainville Avenue, B1 Zone. Carrier Group Inc., application for special permit for 25 lot cluster subdivision for property located at 8517 and 8518 Moraya Road, adjacent to 18 Moraya Road, R40 Zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this hybrid public hearing. Participation in person is at 1 Monteith Drive Town Hall Town Council Chambers, or online participation is via the link to the meeting on the Town of Farmington's website at the address on the screen. A copy of this proposal is online at the address on the screen, or by calling the Planning Department at Farmington Town Hall at 860-675-2325. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this ninth day of March 2023, Town Plan and Zoning Commission, Ina St. James, Chair.
Thank you. Shannon, before we start, did we do a check to make sure folks online can hear us?
We've checked a couple of times with, I've done, I've done checks with our IT staff.
Okay.
And I've got another staff member online. We're good.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. We do need to make some, I shouldn't say substitutions, but I guess they are, that Patrick is not here. We also have some applications where a couple of the commissioners were not present at. So here is what I would like to do. Please let me know if you agree. First Church of Christ and Sign Pro Inc. applications. Vandal, Mr. Vandal, you're okay?
Yep.
Being a voting member, right? Gloria and Dale Massey, James, you're good? You're being a voting member, okay? And for Carrier Group, Mike Walsh?
Yep.
Excellent. And BB Development, Mike and James.
Good.
All right. We are covered and we can begin. All right. We do have a continue.
I was going to make it, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
So just for the record, because I know Mr. Halsted just read the legal notice and BB Development is, there is no public hearing that was closed at the last meeting. We had to publish legal notice, not sure if it was going to continue or not, so it was closed at the last hearing. It's just going to be discussed under old business this evening, so there'll be no public comment on 368 Plainville Avenue. And the Polo Grounds, when we get to it, will be continued. So if anyone is here or is called in with respect to the Polo Ground application, that matter is being continued this evening till April.
Okay, thank you. All right, the first application is from First Church of Christ. It's for a sign at property located at 75 Main Street in Farmington. And who do we have?
I believe we have Biff Schekinger on the phone.
Yes, Shannon, hi. Thank you very much. I'm Biff Schekinger. I'm here representing First Church. Thank you for hearing this this evening. I'll be quick. There's an existing poll for signs that we have right now, two nine-square-foot signs that hang for it that are directional in terms of where the village trader and also the offices for the church. And the church's nursery school wanted to have another nine-square-foot sign added to that. So this is the village trader one and the First Church to the offices, and we would add the other nine there. We've already fabricated the sign. And it would go right there, and we'd get rid of, if you notice, they have a lot of these temporary ones they keep putting up. We would get rid of those, and then put the permanent sign there, and that's what the sign looks like.
Thank you.
And you should all be lucky. That's the quickest intro I've ever done on a project.
All right, we appreciate it. Thank you. All right, let me turn it over to the commissioners for questions. Mike?
So what's the total?
No, no, yeah. Twenty-seven square feet.
Twenty-seven.
And what's the allowable?
I think 25. So it is a five-six vote.
Okay.
That's what I noted in the agenda overview.
Okay, no questions. Thank you.
Matt?
No questions.
Right, Scott?
No questions.
So weird seeing it.
I know.
Okay, Liz?
No questions. Thank you.
All right.
So the only question was to clarify, the sign is not lit or it's lit from the ground? Is that a true statement?
There, I don't believe there's any lighting on the signs.
No further questions.
Okay, James?
No questions.
And?
No questions for me.
Okay, that was an easy one, quick one. All right, so it sounds like we are ready for a vote. I do not have any additional questions. Thank you for the documents that were submitted and also the brief presentation. So we need a motion in a second, please.
I'll make the motion to approve the sign application for First Church of Christ at 75 Main Street.
Second.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? All right, you are all set. We'll be hearing from town staff.
All right, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Forgetting there's a group online. Who am I talking to? All right, all right, the next application is for a property located at 9 Farm Springs Road, excuse me. It's another sign application. And who's presenting? I think it's Sign Pro, right, Shannon?
Correct.
Okay. And who do we have?
Chrissy Brachetta Pharoah, I believe.
Hello?
Hi, Chris.
Okay, can, if you go ahead, Chrissy, introduce yourself and then discuss the application.
Hello, my name is Chrissy or Christine Brachetta Pharoah. I am here on behalf of Sign Pro and Hartford Healthcare. Thank you very much to the commission and all of the hardworking staff for getting this onto the agenda so quickly. We are very excited to work with you on kicking off getting this long empty building filled with four to 500 new employees. So obviously, tonight, we are proposing the new sign package, which includes adding a street sign indicator, Farm Springs Road, to the top of the existing monument sign at the end of, at the entrance to Farm Springs Road. Other than that, we are just replacing the existing tenant panel for Hartford Healthcare. It is an existing internally illuminated sign, so we did propose that one to keep in standard with what is existing. The next one is replacing another existing monument sign that is also internally illuminated. This one is different, however, that it is only Hartford Healthcare on, that will be on the sign. There's nothing there now. Just the monument that is internally illuminated. The next sign will be the window signage, excuse me, which is 2.24 square feet out of the entire 315 square foot allowance because it is applied to the outside of the door. So that will come out of the allowance. The next sign is the building sign that faces 84 East. This will be a halo-lit sign, and the 199 square feet allowance does include the logo. So that is 199 square feet out of the allowance. The next sign is the retaining wall sign that you see here, which will be halo-lit as well. And actually went from, was first proposed as, I think, 93 square feet, which they did bump up to 111 square feet just to round out the end of the 315 square foot allowance. And that is, as you can see, the view from both 84 East and West, so you will see only the wall sign from 84 East. And from 84 West, you'll be able to see the retaining wall sign. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. You can see the retaining wall sign and the wall sign from eastbound. And I believe that concludes the entire sign package. Again, I would just like to say, I know there was some question about the illumination on the existing monuments. We went to check on-site today to confirm that they were internally illuminated. So what we have proposed is just in keeping with those standards. Otherwise, the new signage is all halo-lit proposed. And if you have any questions, I would be happy to try to answer them for you.
Thank you. Mike?
Maybe just a question for Shannon about the internally illuminated one?
Yeah, so all of our records say they're supposed to be halo-lit.
Okay.
And the, I admittedly have not verified, been out in the field to verify, but all the records indicate the approvals, prior approvals should have been halo-lit. And particularly the one right at 9 Farm Springs Road. Every other sign along Farm Springs Road is externally illuminated based on our records.
How should we handle that?
So we can either approve it as halo or externally illuminated, or we can table, you know, table it to the next meeting.
Okay. See what the rest commissioners think.
Yep, I agree. Go ahead.
I just, this is sign one here on the screen, right?
Correct, yes, this is sign one.
So just walk me through this, right, the, the, currently it says Farm Springs Roads at the bottom, and that's just moving to the top? So how to think about that?
Correct.
Okay. All right, no questions. Thank you.
So just to tag on to his question, there's an increase in sign square footage?
Correct.
All right, I'm trying to understand where that is. It just removed the address from below to above?
Correct, because technically the address doesn't count as sign area.
Okay. Thank you.
The street name really isn't a sign area, so now they've used that as sign space.
Okay, that helps. Thank you.
Sure.
So.
Liz? That asked my question. Thank you.
No questions.
All right, James?
No questions.
And Matthew?
Nothing for me.
If I could briefly interrupt, I would just like to also say that we would be happy to make it halo-lit if that's whatever you guys would like to do. We are happy to work with you and get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. That was good. I mean, it was fabulous. That's our answer, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think the design should be changed to what the approval was for.
Yeah.
And not the internally illuminated.
Okay. Everyone in agreement?
Agreed.
Agreed.
All right. When, so exciting news for sure. Lots of buildings are getting occupied in that area. We have the apartment building. Do you know when it's going to be occupied, any chance?
Oh, that part I do not know, unfortunately. I was inquiring a bit about that, and I really only got the September area. I don't have an exact date.
I don't have any other information regarding that building.
It's awesome, though. I read it in the paper. All right, so we need a motion in a second with the change of the lighting. Mike?
Mike? Make a motion to approve the Sign Pro application for 9 Farm Springs Road with the change of the first sign being changed to halo-lit.
And sign two.
And sign two. Be halo-lit.
Okay, how about a second?
Liz Sanford, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Okay. You are all set, and it's with the change of sign one and two, halo-lit. Because she probably heard me, right? Sorry.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Let's see, the next one is an application we are accepting. It's an application from Jack Camper for property located at 6 Crosswood Road. We need a motion in the second place.
Make a motion to accept the application for 6 Crosswood Road from Jack Camper?
Read the whole thing, go ahead.
I, sorry, I can't. I'll make a motion to accept the application for special permit for accessory apartment use in excess of 650 square feet in the R40 OS Zone and scheduled public hearing with a recommended hearing date of April 24, 2023.
Second?
Liz Sanford, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Okay, we're all set. Next one, same thing. It's an application from Amber Nojik for a property located in 34 River Road in Unionville.
I'll make the motion to accept the application from Amber Nojik at 34 River Road for special permit to raise no more than 20 foul in the R20 Zone is scheduled public hearing for April 24, 2023.
Thank you, and second?
Liz Sanford, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? All right, we are all set with new business. Thank you. Okay, so now we are at the public hearing portion. For anyone that is here regarding the item for Town Farm Development, that item is going to be continued, so just so you know, we're not going to be discussing it today. For everyone else, the way this works is the applicant presents to us, the commissioners have a chance to ask questions. We open it up to the public. We have a chance to ask questions again. Applicant has a chance to reply. Sometimes we vote on the matter that day, sometimes we don't. Sometimes meetings continue, sometimes they don't. You will know why they're continuing or why we're not taking a vote. And that's what it is. And I thank you again for being kind to all of us. The first item is an application from Gloria and Dale Massey, and it's an application for special permit to raise not more than 20 foul at 868 Plainville Avenue, R20, R30 Zone. And are you, the Massey's here? Okay, the podium is all set?
Yes, yep. So please come to the podium.
Hi, I'm Gloria Massey, 868 Plainville Avenue, Farmington. And we applied for a permit to have no more than 20 foul. We did get approved for the six originally, and we got the six. We'd like to add to that.
And I wasn't sure, it looks like you may be attempted to draw like the enclosure where the chickens would be, or?
Yeah, that's approximately where the chicken coop is going. And the size, the dimensions, let me see, pull it up on my phone, no more than 44 square feet. Rob, my son who's building it is, he's here, so.
Please come to the podium. If you're going to, yeah, if you're going to participate, please come to the podium and identify yourself. That's okay. Thank you.
My name is Robert Massey. I'm the son, and I'm building the chicken coop. It is 44 square feet. I believe we were allowed 50 if allowed the chickens. Correct.
Okay.
I have not built an enclosed run yet, but I do plan to, because our yard is not fenced in, so we would fence them in.
Yeah, and would be fenced on top too.
Yes, yes, fully enclosed.
We do have a lot of box in the area.
Absolutely. All right, let me turn it over to commissioners, but don't go in. All right. All right, Mike, questions for the applicants?
Just the conditions that we usually apply to all all follow applications, no roosters?
No.
Okay. Looks like it's plenty far away from the lot lines. And the food and waste materials, how will you be disposing of those?
We have covered containers for the food, and the waste is going to be going into a compost pile that will eventually go into my garden.
We actively garden and compost at our house. The food will also be kept inside in our sunroom, enclosed sunroom, and concealed.
Thank you.
Hi, what structure are the current six chickens in now?
They are in a brooder box that I built in my basement.
Okay.
With a heat lamp. It's just a couple pallets and boards and chicken wire put together.
Okay.
Not enough feathers yet to go outside.
Sure, understood. Any complaints from neighbors or with the current?
They actually, they hope we get this approved. They want eggs.
Everybody does.
Yeah, that makes sense. All right, great. Thank you. I'm good, Scott. Thank you.
That's good. Oh, my gosh, okay, Scott.
I have no further questions now.
Sounds good, Liz?
No further questions. Thank you.
All right.
No questions, please.
Thanks.
No questions.
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Okay, awesome. I do not have any questions. We covered everything. Let's see here. The communication went out to your neighbors?
Yes, they did. Yeah, we gave out all copies or actually the original slips to the town.
Perfect. Okay.
Yep, everything's been verified. The mailings were verified.
All right, it sounds like we're ready to take a vote?
A public comment.
Yes, that's a public meeting. All right, good.
Sorry, I know, we're out of sync. It's going to take a bit.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
We'll start in the room, and then I'll check online.
Yeah, that's a good idea. So if there's anyone in the room that wishes to speak in favor of our position or has questions for the applicant, this would be your time or chance to do that. And we're good in here. How about online?
Okay, well, that's the same question. If anyone has called in online to offer comment regarding the application at 868 Plainville Avenue, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom to offer comment. One more time, if anyone's called in to offer comment regarding the application at 868 Plainville Avenue, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. Madam Chair, there are no hands raised.
No less many questions. We're good? All right, so at this point, I would like to close the public hearing on this item. And we need a motion and a second please.
I'll make the motion to approve the application from Gloria and Dale Massey for special permit to raise not more than 20 foul at 868 Plainville Ave, R20, R30 Zone.
Second?
Liz Sanford, I second.
Okay, we're ready to vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? All right, you are all set, and Shannon will be in touch with you?
Everyone.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in. We appreciate it. Okay, next item. Sorry about that. Is an application from Town Farm Development LLC. It's an application for modification of conditions of approval on a prior special permit that was issued, and we are continuing this one?
Correct. At the staff's request, the applicant has agreed to an extension, and the extension is up. We received written extension. So to move this, so we'll need to open it, which we've done, but we'll need a motion to continue this to April 10, please.
Okay. Need a motion and a second please.
I'll make a motion to continue the application from Town Farm Development LLC to modification of conditions of approved special permit for that use at 1552 Town Farm Road, R40 FW Zones till the April 10, 2023 commission meeting.
Liz Sanford, I second.
Right, all in favor?
Madam Chair, just, I'll be recusing myself.
Yes, yes, I, thank you, yep. Noted. Thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? And thank you, Mike, for letting me know. All right, so this is continued, I guess. We don't talk about it today, right? We'll talk about it in April.
Correct.
Okay. All right, next item is an application from Harold M. Wilson. And it's for a special permit for clear cutting and restoration and ridgeline protection area for property located at 61 Eli Road, R80 Zone. This item has been continued from March 13. And do we have an update?
I believe we have Mr. Wilson on the phone.
Yes, I'm here.
Perfect.
My name is Harold Mark Wills.
Awesome. Yep, go right ahead.
And first, I wanted to offer my condolences to the commission, and I apologize for the number of delays. As town staff knows, I've kept them in the loop. We've had to let our original arborist go. He, while I was out on vacation, he did not come up to the property. He did not return phone calls, so we replaced him last week with B&amp;M Tree Service, who I think the town has some history with. They came up on Tuesday or Wednesday this week. They did an inspection of the property. They were supposed to have issued a letter by Thursday, and I shared with Shannon their emails that they would get it to me by Saturday, which we received about 3 o'clock this afternoon, which is on the screen now. I will say that I take one exception in their letter where he says that based on his visual inspection, all but one of the trees taken down within the 75-foot setback area, all but one tree in the 75 setback area from the the tree key and the proposed home development that was dated, I think, 2002, and I don't know if you have that there to put up or not, that all but one tree have been cut, and that's not, that's not correct. There's actually about 10 trees in that area. He was paying more attention in the area behind. If you keep, someplace you have the tree plant there. That's mine. I think it was on your piece of, your, your.
Yeah, I'll see if I can find it, Mark, while you're talking.
Sure. So he was, he was paying more attention in the area where we had clear cut the sumac and other invasive species, and then to the, and I'm trying to get my bearings here, and to the south of what was the existing home. There are two tree, there you are. So if you look at this and you see to the far left-hand side, the white square with the small trees around it, right there, that is the existing home, which is now a, we cut down the A-frame, if you recall, to a deck. The trees to the bottom of that, if you go down, continue down. There are three large trees still in that area that exist. If you go back into the yard, back towards the home, there are three, two trees that still exist there. The one tree in the middle of the yard, I think it's tree number four, that still exists. There are six trees, if you go up to where the pool area is, there are six trees that still exist there. And then that open area that looks like where there's no trees to the top of that. Note, over here too, in the, what I would call, I guess that would be the northwest corner of the property. That whole area still is, is, there's a lot of mature trees in that area. They just weren't keyed in when CR3 Architectural Firm developed the tree count back in 2001 or 2002. Those trees are there. I did not realize when B&amp;M came out here last week, they actually came out here last fall, because I think I mentioned I had to cut some 35- Because I think I mentioned I had to cut some thirty-five trees down in my front yard and a few trees next to the house in the side and rear yard. Um, and as he says in his letter, he had advised us that the trees that we did cut down in September of this year um, were uh, both ash and um, hemlocks that were diseased and dying, uh, which is why they were cut down. Um, he also has stated that the clear cutting, which we're uh, I guess asking for permission to clear cut uh, uh, I don't know what the term would be, asking forgiveness for doing something we should have asked permission for. Uh, for clear cutting the sumac and other invasive species that were uh, right in front of the existing home on the western face, which kind of looks with, which was the yard originally of the existing home. Uh, he did identify those as invasive species. Um, so we have had him up here. They did not give me, uh, because I only received this at three, three thirty this afternoon. They did not give me an exact uh, remediation plan, which I'm happy to provide to you. Uh, he did say, you know, make suggestions on the type of plants. Uh, he's, he suggested trees that were ornamental, that would bloom and provide a lot of coverage. Um, and also those that don't remain, require maintenance, because everything that would be planted, it's very steep there. Um, you know, would be hard to maintain. Um, I had offered a remediation plan. If you recall, the last meeting back in February, but that was my swag without having the benefit of an arborist telling me what to do. I just kind of went online and and threw in some maples and I believe some Canadian uh, uh, hemlocks or something to that effect. And he said, that's not what we should be planting. Uh, he suggested dogwoods and some other type of trees. Um, the view that you just saw, well, if you keep going back down, keep going. Up the other direction. If you go like to page two or three. Well, right there. That, oh, back up, right there. That was the view. Uh, that's the current view right now from Town Farm Road. Uh, everything you see here, the, the big black area is actually windows on the original house. They've been visible since, you know, nineteen seventy-eight or whenever this home was built. The little rectangular piece to the left of that is actually the facade on decking and the pool that was original to the house. Um, and uh, yeah, so if you look at the house behind the windows, you can see my home, the new home. And to the right lower corner of that home, you see there's some dark clusters of trees. Those are the trees that are still right, you just passed it, right in there. Those trees are still there. Um, so what, what got cut down primarily was sumac. This is the view you would have seen in two thousand one when we bought the property, except for the house behind it. Uh, and I think someplace in here, we have a picture of that. Um, probably further down, if not the, maybe the first page even or second page. Um, yeah, there you go. That was the picture I took probably in November-ish of two thousand one. And the snow again shows you, you know, what wasn't uh, you know, uh, forest or trees uh, that was actually lawn. And I also wanted to make, make it clear, because I think it shows up in these, in the notes here for the meeting tonight. Um, that I had appealed the cease and desist order, and I just want to make sure, I, I didn't appeal this cease and desist order. Uh, in fact, by the time uh, we contacted, were contacted by the town, we'd stopped cutting. I was just informed by the town that that was an order I had to go. I just want to make sure people don't think that I'm um, appealing the fact that I cut trees uh, without the permission of the town. I, I recognize that. Uh, I'm not appealing anything here. I'm asking uh, for the town to work with me on what should have been allowed and what should not have been allowed, and to work on a remediation plan to make the town happy.
Thank you. So, do we have a plan or no?
Like I said, they have not provided a plan yet. Uh, as they said in their letter, they'll work with me on the plan, but because of the timing of them getting um, I didn't receive their letter till three o'clock, so I did not have a chance to get back with them uh, and get any type of, of plan. This is a, what you're looking at now is a plan that I had proposed. Uh, if you recall back in February, but that was just, like I said, that was my swag at uh, what we could do. Um, and they're saying that, yeah, we could do plantings like this, but they're not going to be the type of trees I talked about. They would not recommend those type of trees.
Thank you. Uh, Shannon, how many, this, this goes back, right, a while? Um, we've been waiting for this plan. So if we were to do an extension, like.
Uh, there is enough time, but Mr. Uh, Mr. Wilson will need to grant another fourteen day extension to uh, bring us to the April tenth meeting.
Yeah, I, I can definitely go back to B and M tomorrow morning and have them come up here and work with me and develop a plan to present to you folks.
If we are back here and there's no plan on April tenth.
There's still, so uh, Mr. Wilson's entitled to run his extension time. Yep, there's sixty-five days in extension time. I'm not offhand. I don't know how much we've gone through at this particular point. I've got it. All on my spreadsheets upstairs, but there is, uh, I know there's at least fourteen days to get us to April tenth.
Fine. So thank you for the additional information. Uh, we don't have everything that we need.
I understand.
Decision, so my recommendation is that we continue.
Well, just, Madam Chair, it is a public hearing, so I don't, if, if, one, if any commissioners have questions or, but we should probably also check in case somebody did call in from the public.
Even if we continue. Okay. I guess we'll follow the law. Uh, I don't think there's anything new here. Uh, Mike, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Talk about it again in April.
Yep.
Uh, no questions tonight. Thank you.
No questions.
No questions.
Yep.
No question.
Just hang on a second, Mark.
No questions.
Okay, we do not have any new questions.
Okay. So it's just if anyone has called in from the public to um, offer comment online, uh, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. To offer comment regarding the tree clearing or tree cutting and restoration at sixty-one Eli. There is a hand raised.
Okay.
Uh, Kate Grady Benson, you can unmute your microphone and address the commission. Please, uh, full name and uh, uh, address for the record, please.
I guess this is Kate Grady Benson, thirty-two Mountain Road, Farmington. Um, I'm just uh, asking the question in regards to whatever it is that B and M Tree Services comes up with. Um, that it be native plantings and also consider um, I, I understand that you want to keep your view. What I'm looking at in the letter that you received from Joe Braga, it indicates that he is looking at plantings that'll allow you to continue your view. Um, but that the plantings really are native plants, native trees, and that there's significant girth that they are actually going to be um, performing the necessary environmental work that they need to do. That, that is, is a suggestion from my side.
Yeah. Am I allowed to respond to that or?
Just hang on, Mark. We'll get all the public comments and you're allowed to respond. Uh, if anyone else has called in to offer comment regarding this matter, please raise your hand and you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Again, this is for sixty-one Eli Road. Okay, there are no other hands raised, and then we'll just extend the same courtesy to those in attendance. If anyone has here in attendance to offer comment on sixty-one Eli Road, please step to the podium. Okay, Madam Chair, there's no other comments. Um, Mr. Wilson, if you want to respond.
Yeah, I just wanted to uh, clarify. When Joe wrote, it's the intent of replanning uh, in other replanning project, both safety and view protection. The view protection wasn't my view protection. The intent was a protection from uh, you know, uh, the public spaces, the general public, Town Farm Road. Uh, uh, the polo fields. The protection wasn't to protect my view. He wants to, he understands I need to plant trees and other plantings to protect the view of the, the general public of my home. Not, not vice versa, not for me to be able to see you, but so you can't see me. So when it says view protection, we're talking about protecting your view of me, not my view of you. If that makes sense. We're gonna try to, when we plant new trees, we're in, in other shrubs or whatever, we're gonna try to hide ourselves from you the way that I think is what you're wanting us to do. Uh, I'm not gonna be planting trees that protect my view or enhance my view or maintain my view. We're gonna try to plant things so we attempt to hide as much of the uh, the, the new home and the existing home as possible. So I think it works opposite of what the uh, the young lady from Mountain Road was thinking. That we were trying to protect or maintain my view of the valley. We're trying to obstruct the valley's view of my house. That, that's our intention when we plant.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. We will wait to see.
Sure.
In April, and um, thank you for taking this under consideration when you're speaking with your arborists uh, to consider native plantings. Thank you. And that's it.
And a motion to continue.
Okay, and a motion to continue. Alright.
I'll make a motion to continue the application from Harold M. Wilson at sixty-one Eli, Eli Road for special permit for clearing, clear cutting and restoration of ridge line, ridge line protection area, our eighty zone to the April tenth, twenty twenty-three commission meeting.
Liz Sanford, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed, extensions. Alright, we are continued. Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
And Mark, if you could please get an email to me uh, this evening or tomorrow with the extension to April tenth, please.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, the next item that we have is a, excuse me, is continuance of a public hearing from Carrier Group Inc. It's an application for twenty-five lots, Buster subdivision on lots eighty-five seventeen and eighty-five eighteen Moreia Road. And Mike, you're on, right?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Christian Howe, and my office is located at three fourteen Main Street here in town. Uh, with me this evening is Tom Daly, a licensed professional engineer with uh, SLR. He's the United States Manager of Civil and Structural Engineering. And Emily Foster is also here regarding traffic. Um, coming off of the last meeting, uh, we're following the, the directions. We're gonna respond to some of the questions and comments from the March thirteenth meeting. We'll try to be as brief as possible. Uh, we're, Tom is gonna review the planned revisions uh, as a result of engineering comments and uh, engineering and staff have been magnificent. They have suffered COVID over the last two weeks and it's jumped from person to person. So they've been kind of shorthanded and under the gun, and we thank them for their patience and uh, in making the comments and getting them to us. Um, uh, after Tom will be Emily Foster, and we're, I'd like the brief testimony of Lisa Mancini, who's one of the owners of the property. Uh, her family is on the property for close to, if not over a hundred years, and so she would like to speak for just a minute or two. Before I turn it over to Tom Daly, I'm gonna just respond to a couple of things that were mentioned that I think are kind of in my wheelhouse or something that I can opine on. Obviously, engineering is not my expertise. That's why I'm a lawyer. And so I'm just gonna quickly respond. Uh, one of the things that was mentioned, and it was a very good question, was about affordable housing from the chair. And at this time, we all recognize the state of Connecticut and the town of Farmington are exploring avenues to deliver more affordable housing to the community, and we think that's a really good thing. Uh, in this matter, we filed before we heard any consideration of affordable housing. We think the property suits market rate units. It blends well between Snowberry Cobble and the residences down across the street. Uh, I might, I should suggest though, that if this application is denied by the commission, either this applicant or a subsequent purchaser could most certainly apply under eight dash thirty G seeking approvals of affordable housing on this parcel. And I think you are all acutely aware, because there's a lot of discussion about affordable housing, that when an applicant brings an eight thirty G uh, parcel, it shifts the burden completely to the town to find viable reasons why it should be denied. So it's a significant tool in bringing affordable housing to the community. Uh, that's not what we're presenting, but it may be in the future if things change. Uh, a neighbor, so that was number one. Number two, uh, several neighbors, but one in particular complained about the number of notices sent by the applicant prior to the hearing. Uh, the word that ri- brings in my ears is we were cherry picking neighbors. And just so you know, we sent the notice, the invitation to the same people we sent the, the service notice to. So it was about fifty-one residences and uh, somehow we're made to feel bad that we didn't keep an open notice to the whole world. Well, we used the list that we had. And this is a, the opposition seems to be very organized, and I'm somewhat surprised that they're claiming they weren't invited. It was invitation only, and they weren't aware of it or couldn't participate. Up until this, today, we're willing to talk to any neighbor about this application, have that discussion. I make no apologies for extending the courtesy of meeting with neighbors to exchange thoughts and ideas about an application. Frankly, I think it's beneficial to both parties because an applicant can hear, hey, this is really bothering the neighbors. What can we do to jiggle this a little bit, make it a little bit better? And, and conversely, I think neighbors can see that, particularly with this applicant, that, that we're humans, that we're neighbors. We live here in town. And so I, I think it's a good thing and I'm sorry if some neighbors are somehow offended. The one that had the primary complaint was actually at that meeting, so I'm not really sure what that's all about. I don't think it's that huge of an issue. It's a courtesy. It's not required by statute or ordinance. Um, the last uh, thing that I think I can address is a number of neighbors, and I've seen a lot of the filings saying, gee, the land trust should buy this, or the town should purchase this property. And um, actually, Ms. Mancini is gonna speak to the, the town acquisition aspect. But um, what I can tell you is um, once the family elected to uh, list the property, sell the property, they did their due diligence. There were a lot of out of uh, out of town, out of estate developers chomping at the bit, champing at the bit to purchase this property and develop it. So I, she'll tell you more and give, provide you with more detail about how uh, honestly, they did a lot of due diligence to find the person that they thought would best suit this community. So I, I'm gonna turn it over to Tom Daly now, and I'll be back in about fifteen, twenty minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, for the record, Tom Daly with SLR Consulting. Um, there was a few brief comments that the uh, neighbors uh, made during the presentation um, that we thought we'd have a, a follow-up just to clarify a few things. First, there was a question about private roads and what um, services were provided. So you associate, these will be private roads. Um, your town regu- zoning regulations specify how those roads are designed and what, what dimensions they need to be. We meet all those standards. I actually did a um, CGS search around, and it looks like most of the cul-de-sacs in town are fifty to sixty feet. We're at sixty feet for our two main cul-de-sacs, and that one little one that serves about six homes is uh, forty-eight feet. The road width, actually, we're two feet wider than, than what's specified in your, in your code. Your code says the road should be twenty-two feet. We are twenty-four foot wide. So we believe that we are meeting all the standards of all the same cul-de-sacs in town. Um, but it's our understanding with the private roads is the association will have to do the plowing, yet the town will provide a trash service. But I understand there's a fee associated with that. Uh, there was a question about lawns and, and um, pesticides and herbicides and lawn care. Uh, it was a condition of the inland wetlands approval that we had to submit a integrated pest management plan. And that I basically identifies best management practices to manage the, the lawns. My understanding, that will actually be incorporated into the homeowners association. So anybody who buys in understands there's that. Um, that's actually almost, almost, I think, every project uh, that uh, has a lawn in it. Uh, with the Wetlands Commission over the last few years, it's always been a pretty standard practice uh, that we've had to put that in. Um, and uh, one thing I would say is, one of the real benef- one of the benefits of a cluster subdivision is just the overall lawn area is significantly less. Under an as-of-right subdivision, the lots would be more towards a one acre zone. That's just gonna have more lawn that has to be maintained. So there's a net positive there. Um, ultimately, right, we get more open space, untouched open space. Um, there was a question about traffic humming and sidewalks along uh, Moreia Road. Uh, we did have a brief conversation with uh, town staff on that. Ultimately, it was the, the town staff to provide guidance on any traffic humming or sidewalks. Sidewalk on Moreia Road would have a real challenge because of that culvert that goes under Moreia Road. You, you essentially could have a sidewalk, and then you're gonna ask people to step back into the curb and then step, step back in. You, you essentially could have a sidewalk and then you're gonna ask people to step back into the curb and then step, step back in. Um, but speaking with town staff, uh, it was their initial record or reaction that traffic calming was not appropriate for this particular location, nor was sidewalks along Moraya Road. Uh, Mr. Roy was a property that was in Bristol. He had a few questions regarding proximity from his house to the other houses. The closest uh, house uh, to his property would be thirteen hundred feet. And, and he one of the, he's one of the greatest beneficiaries of the open space. Essentially, his entire, that whole section up there is gonna be dedicated open space. Um, also, it should be noted that his house is approximately six feet higher than, than our highest house. So the water, everything in his area is actually pitching towards us. There's no possibility of any water from our project to even go in, in his direction. He's actually upgraded in the watershed than us. Um, and then we, we would say is we received, um, so we worked, since we saw you, we worked through your town, your town staff comments. We have gone through those. Um, you include in your packet is a revised set that includes those. We also have provided you with a comment response letter showing each comment how we address those. It is my opinion, my professional opinion, that we've tackled those, we've tackled all those. But in full under disclosure is obviously the town has to work their way through it and then we'll have to work through those finer details. But I think we really put um, really put a lot of effort into this revised set. And I'd like to stand before you think that if we're not already there, we're really, really close with some minor details. But um, and I would say majority of the revisions probably won't even be noticeable to the eye. Um, they are simply either clarifications on, say, stormwater calculations or adding more notes on it and some additional clearing. But in terms of lot layout, um, uh, you know, infrastructure, all those things that we presented to you at last, uh, the last meeting really have not changed. It really was more clarification and, and just button, buttoning up the plans. Thank you. With that, I'm gonna ask uh, Emily Foster to uh, come up.
No, excuse, excuse me, public comment. The applicant will speak and then we will take public comment after. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Emily Foster with S L R Consulting. Um, I'm just gonna answer a few of the comments that were brought up for, um, that were traffic related. Um, the first was, um, there are a few comments on traffic counts, how we only conducted um, one hour or two hour counts. I just wanted to clarify that we conducted two twenty-four hour counts, uh, one at each of the proposed driveway locations. And then from there, we selected the heaviest hour in the morning and the heaviest hour in the afternoon to perform our analysis. And this is industry standard. Um, so based on the counts, we conducted the heaviest hours were from seven to eight and four to five and four to five was the heaviest hour throughout the day. Um, so just to clarify that. Um, in terms of trip generation, um, that was determined using I D's trip generation manual, which is an industry standard and also a state standard. Um, the rates from the manual for a single family detached housing, they were determined based on data from thirty different study sites around the country, um, including some sites in Connecticut. Again, this is within the I T E generation manual. Um, and then I just wanna note that the numbers that I presented in the traffic report and um, in my previous presentation, those are only the peak hour estimates. So that one hour in the morning and the one hour in the afternoon. So while each household may have two or more cars, it is expected that not all the trips will be made within those peak hours. So for example, in the morning, some people may leave before seven AM, some may leave after eight AM. And the same thing in the afternoon, some may come back or travel before four and after five. So those are really just looking at the two worst case scenarios um, to provide a conservative analysis. And all that is industry standard and state standard. Um, and then lastly, um, there are some observations made in March that indicated that the volumes that we conducted in January were low. Um, the observations were a two-hour eastbound volume. Um, and so we counted that they, that those, those volumes that were presented were approximately twenty percent higher than the counts that we took. So to reflect this difference, we increased the um, existing volumes that we had on Moraya Road. And we reanalyzed the two driveway intersections. And with this increase, it was still found that the proposed driveway intersections are expected to operate at good level of service. Uh, meaning that there's enough gaps in traffic for the vehicles to exit the driveways um, during both peak hours.
Thank you.
Christian Howe, again, over and over again. Okay. So one thing that I didn't discuss in the original presentation was uh, your criterion for uh, approval is a special permit criteria which you are all, you probably hear three or four times at every hearing. I know you're familiar with it, but I feel obliged to quickly run through that. So it's a speed reading course here. So number one is that the existing and future character of the neighborhood in which the zone and/or use is to be located will be protected. Well, consistent with the cluster found in the surrounding neighborhoods and uh, the dedication of open space, the updated attractive homes with plenty of screening, we think we fulfill number one. Number two is adequate safeguards have been taken to protect adjacent property and the neighborhood in general from detriment. Well, again, I uh, have presented, we have presented through our engineering that we have sound construction practices, preservation of natural resources, buffer, and not a substantial impact on traffic. Three, traffic circulation within the site and the amount, location and access to parking is adequate. An adequate site distance is provided for all proposed and existing driveways. You've heard the testimony about the uh, width of the streets uh, and the testimony about traffic and we think we're fine there. Um, four, that the uh, road network to include intersections impacted by the proposed development will be capable of satisfactorily handling the increased traffic gener- generated by such use. You've just heard that testimony. This, there indeed is an adequate road network. And uh, five is the basic design is consistent with the overall appearance of the neighborhood. The proposed use is residential. You've seen what the houses may look like pretty close to that. And uh, they're updated and very attractive and will not be detrimental to any of the surrounding neighborhood. And six, um, where there's increased building density over that permitted under the existing zone, the topography, now other natural resources, the property are capable of accommodating such increased development. Well, this cluster um, certainly uh, appears to be supported by the deep correspondence and the various uh, Connecticut Regional Council of Governments from which Northwest Hills chimed in, Nuggetuck Valley and are on Connecticut Regional. So all, of course, all public services are available to the proposed development. So we feel as if we check all the boxes in terms of special permit. And at this point, I am going to turn it over to Lisa Mancini.
Thank you.
My name is Lisa Mancini. I reside at twenty-nine Briarwood Road in neighboring West Hartford. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight on behalf of my family, who are the owners of the property on Moraya Road, which is the subject of this um, proposal and hearing. I am also the executor of the estate of my late aunt, Mary Ann Cardone, which has an ownership interest in this property. As Chris said, this land has been in our family for well over a hundred years. It was purchased by my mother's grandparents when they decided to move their family from Brooklyn to Farmington because the air is better here. I guess it still is too. I can assure you um, that the decision to sell some of this land was not an easy one for our family. My mother is ninety years old, she's still living, and that homestead is very dear to her. Upon the passing of my aunt, however, a share of the ownership went into her estate and there are multiple heirs and owners in all different ages and stages and stations of life to live out of state completely. The range of what they wanted to see happen with this property runs the gamut of keep every inch of it, don't sell anything, to sell everything and squeeze every dime we can get out of it. We eventually came to an agreement that in order to keep the homestead and the land that surrounds it in our family for as long as possible, these two large lots had to be sold. The family was unified in the belief that the best outcome for this property would be if the town of Farmington would purchase it for dedicated open space. Toward that end, the very first thing we did after deciding to sell it was to approach the Farmington Land Acquisition Committee to discuss this possibility. We were very well received and advised that the town would have an appraisal done and put forth a fair market value offer. That happened expeditiously, but unfortunately, the appraisal that resulted in evaluation and a purchase offer was substantially less than that of previous appraisals that we had done over the years. In follow-up discussion with the Open Space Committee, we were advised to obtain a new appraisal, which included development potential and submitted to the committee for consideration. We immediately went out and hired a Farmington-based appraiser. It was an expensive and time-consuming process. As he advised us that in order to get the most accurate and complete valuation, we needed to also obtain a, a soil survey and a current wetland study. We did this. The end result was that again, our appraisal came back significantly higher than that of the towns. We provided the appraisal and all the backup to the Land Acquisition Committee. And they in turn presented it to the town council to ask for authorization to try to negotiate a purchase price that would be acceptable to both the town and our family. The council's response in February of twenty twenty was that they opted not to continue to pursue the acquisition at that time. And they would not, at that time, authorize any further consideration in regard to the purchase. We were truly perplexed by this decision to close the door on even the possibility of the town purchasing these lots. As a result, with the estates still to be settled, we had no choice but to list these properties for sale on the open market. And when the listing went active in act, in June of twenty twenty, we immediately received multiple offers from several local developers as well as interest from a large national builder of tract housing, who had been in contact with us for years. As a family, we carefully and thoroughly considered each offer to the point that we drove around and looked at subdivisions built and under construction by each one of the potential buyers. We do care about this land and we care about what's built on it. The new houses will abut our homestead. I personally need to have a sense of pride, not dread, when I drive down Moraya Road in the future. I'm here tonight to tell you that this proposal put forth to you by the carriers is the one which our family feels is by far the best option. Various initial offers and subdivision concepts propose the construction of up to forty-two houses constructed on both parcels. One proposed a thirty-eight house subdivision. Another concept proposed a forty-two unit cluster adult active community with, with a clubhouse. When the Carrier family ultimately put forth this plan, we were very happy with it. Twenty-five houses and the key, eighty percent, eighty percent of the land being donated to the town of Farmington to remain dedicated open space. Adjoining space that the town already open owns as open space. Approximately seventy of the eighty-seven acres that the carriers are purchasing from us will remain undeveloped and open and the town, the town gets it for free. We have listened diligently to the commentary from the community and to the many who expressed that the opinion that the town should buy this land. They, they had the chance. They passed on it. And yet by virtue of this proposal, this land is, by and large, still gonna remain open space. I also want to take this opportunity to specifically address public comments that have been made that express the sentiment that this proposal is being quote, railroaded through Hartford, Kermit. And that the Carrier family is somehow getting preferential treatment by the Farmington Wetlands and T P Z commissions. My family has stood alongside the carriers for over two years as they diligently work to refine the sale and the plan of development. They have kept us well informed and took the time to educate us during every single phase of this process. This proposal represents years of study, planning and revision to ensure that the finished product that they put before this commission merits approval. No corners were cut. The carriers are absolutely meticulous. As evidenced by the sheer number of soil tests, engineering studies, environmental studies, G I S mapping and wetland studies, et cetera, that they performed and commissioned on this land. I know a lot of that is probably standard procedure. But many was, many of these were conducted during the summer of twenty twenty-one when it never stopped raining. And I can personally assure you that anytime a result was inconsistent, inconclusive, or Johnny or Patrick Carrier found something even remotely questionable, they sent the engineers, the scientists, the experts back out onto the land to retest to find accuracy and clarity in order to be, to be confident that this proposal is predicated upon sound, accurate data and findings. I never realized how much work and consult is done by a developer in conjunction with the town, engineering and building officials ahead of a proposal being submitted to the T P Z for consideration. And listening to Tom Daley, the engineer from S L R presenting this proposal on behalf of the carriers and fielding questions and comments, it should be noted how often he prefaced an answer with the statements, such as, we consulted with town staff on this issue and in review with the town engineer on advice from the T P Z staff, we made this change, we made this reset vision, et cetera, even up until tonight. All of this reflects the number of times that he and/or the carriers sought input from in consultation with town, T P Z officials during the process of readying and refining this proposal for submission. There are no surprises in this proposal and it merits your approval. In conclusion, I feel, I would like to tell you that our family feels highly confident with the stewardship of this land going into the hands of the Carrier family. Theirs is a family business with strong ties to Farmington. Johnny and his brother Patrick are raising families in this town and they intend to continue to do business here for hopefully generations to come. They have demonstrated successful experience in building subdivisions which surround and coexist with wetlands. Their reputation is impeccable. The houses they build are of exceptionally high quality, both inside and out. And I can truthfully stand here and say that I have no doubt that the new neighborhood the carriers will build if the T P Z approves this, this proposal, along with their generous donation of seventy-one acres to become dedicated open space, will be an enhancement to the Moraya Road community and to the town of Farmington. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Not yet. Thank you.
Madam Chair, at this juncture, we're prepared to accept questions from the commission and then the public if that's what you'd see.
That works, that works. Thank you very much. Alright. Mike?
Um, Mr. Daley, could you just explain some of the uh, uh, depth to groundwater results that have, that were updated a few times? Um, some of the higher amounts, the three feet, the four point eight, just, you could just speak to that a little bit?
Uh, well, we clearly were in a, in a wet season, so we have provided that data and then working with town staff, they suggested we go back out there and do that testing. So we uh, updated that results. Um, but throughout the development, we have, or through the planning, we have made modifications to the site to raise the site up. Probably one of the earlier presentation or submissions that was to the commission, we ended up raising the cul-de-sacs up to that to lever to, to get above those areas. Um, and also the detention basins were also raised up to stay above that. In addition to that, the carriers uh, enlisted the services of a geotechnical engineer on the east side to look at the soils um, a little bit closer because that was based upon some test pits. We out there, there were some additional questions, so we brought in an additional expert to do that. The three lots that are on the high side, um, if you read the report from downtown, they are clearly going to be, have to be dealt with separately, differently. We really have two options there. We have to basically bring, put together a holistic uh, foundation drainage package, essentially with water, very high-end waterproofing for those three lots. Or um, Or frankly, an option two would be that they would be slab-only and no basements. That was their recommendation. As you get to the other side of the cul-de-sac, those are actually lots in a fill situation. So that, in addition to that, one of the town staff comments was, could we find a way to promote some infiltration? So because we raised those two cul-de-sacs up on the side, there's an opportunity to get those out of the ground. So the roof leaders for those particular houses are actually now with perforated pipe. So we have done a lot of testing here. There's also a lot of provisions in the plans that talk about, while we're putting like a sewer pipe in, how are you going to de-water that? There's a detail on the plans on how to de-water it and how that is going to be handled from an erosion standpoint. So while we continue to validate those groundwater elevations, it didn't result in any changes to the plans per se in this last revision, because really, we did a lot of that heavy lifting in the last revision to this commission.
The lots in the north, those are all graded higher? Everything's higher to the north? Is it grade down?
To the, to the north. So on this one, it's everything on the map, there's everything on the left is high and it goes to low. And then, yes, the cul-de-sac is basically sitting out of the grade, and most of those lots actually are walkouts, so they have very good gravity flow for the footing drains. So, and as I think I presented last time, all the lots and all the basements are set above the floodplain elevation. We don't have any, there's no floodplain located on any individual lot. So that was once again raising up. So as we worked on that, we continued to raise things up, and that was based upon soil testing.
Okay. And with the stormwater basins, there's no concern of excess water flow across Moria? Anything like that?
No, those basins specifically have been designed in a way to meet your town standards and retain, retain the water and let, release it at a rate no greater than it is today. We also, in the revisions that, basically revision from wetlands to planning and zoning, we actually increased the size of basins to provide additional volume in there. And we actually took a look at the basins for the five-hundred-year storm event. So once again, really kind of belt and suspenders, but put more volume. So on these basins, you'll see, if you compare the footprint during the wetlands approval to this, they are definitely bigger and have more volume, but no increased encroachment any closer to the wetlands. They are actually made larger there. So, and then we provided the town with alternate drainage analysis to prove, basically, they're the same analysis, just looked at two different ways to prove the same conclusions, that we are not increasing any of the peak runoff rates for the zero to, through the two-hundred, through the hundred-year storm event.
Okay. Then Shannon Townstaff is in agreement?
Yes, Bruce, Sarah and I have reviewed the stormwater calculations and the latest revisions, and we believe most of our concerns have been met, and what's left are some minor alterations that need to be addressed.
I have no further questions right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
So there was revised plans today, is that correct, that still need to be reviewed? Is that the understanding?
So there, I don't know, so there were plans, some-
Submitted today, revised plans.
Plans came-
One of my questions was on the, excuse me, the pest management, but is that new plans we'll, we will review after today, or?
Well, the pest management actually has already been submitted. I think it might have been submitted in an earlier version, and it's also submitted to the Wetlands Commission. So it could be somewhere in your package. It's actually a standalone document, and it basically will be brought into the homeowners association. It's not on the plan set, it's probably deep in your pile of a very big binder.
I thought there was revised plans today.
The plans that revised today was to address the town comments.
Got it. Okay. So walk me through the pest management, the pesticides, right? Like, I think a lot of people in the community are thinking about, how is this affecting the surrounding wetlands? What is this project going to do to the surrounding property? So can you just walk us through that?
Sure. So, and really, I'll speak maybe from the voice of the Wetlands Commission. Anytime you put, you know, lawn around, there's a good way to manage your lawn, and there's a bad way to manage the lawn. And what the pest management plan says is, you know, look at it in a measured approach. Give example. You have two dandelions sitting on your lawn. There's no reason to put dandelion killer on the entire lawn. Strategically, just deal with the two dandelions you have, so it's more strategic and using the things that are appropriate. You'll find out, it'll say, use more organic, you know, type, or fertilizers and those type of things. But it's really, it's educating the homeowners in a way that, you know, it's not one of those things that if a pound was good, two pounds better. So it's really about educating them that you're going to look at this. And to be honest, even my, you know, my own lawn is, I've actually gone away from fertilizer, and I just reseed it. I do an overseed every spring and fall, and I find that actually serves almost better than actually just buying more fertilizer. So this, this document will be put into the homeowners association document. So when you come to purchase a lot, this will all be private roads and a homeowner. You actually have that document in there, and you'll understand we're looking for you to be a steward of the land, and this is how we're going to do it. And then, frankly, if you ever hire a lawn care company, the expectation is you're going to hand them a copy of that pest management plan and say, this is what we're going to be looking for you to do. And that's, this is a document that, same document we gave you for midpoint, right? While we weren't that close to wetlands, but that was a critical area. So it's something the Wetlands Commission is clearly, it's really about education almost as much as the actual practice.
So it's not necessarily a restriction, it's more of an education for the homeowner?
Correct.
And, okay.
So there's a lot of document out there now about how to healthy, healthy lawns, you know, how to manage the laws without overdoing it.
Okay, makes sense. So this is going to be an HOA, and it's not public roads? So can you just, most of the neighborhoods in this area are sort of public roads? So why make new people buy into this, into this development and have them pay fees? Like, why an HOA versus just public roads and?
I think your own, your specific regulations define private roads as, as an option. And, and I think I said in the commission before is, but the, the actual thickness of pavement, stone, everything under there is per your town road standards. We've actually put the town road detail on there. With private roads, it does give us a little more flexibility, so the curvilinear of the road, the radius on the roads allows us to be a little more flexible as opposed to a traditional road standard is more designed for, you know, going down the road at thirty-five miles an hour. These are shorter cul-de-sacs, so we were able to be a little more flexible in terms of the radius, and probably more specifically not on this one, but the other one. We have a kind of a tighter radius as we get into the cul-de-sac. That's a kind of a, you know, a smaller radius. That, under a town road standard, wouldn't be an option. That being said, is, you actually have probably have more private roads in town than you think. I think the carriers developed with its straw field, the main road there is public, but all the cul-de-sacs off it are private too. So it's a, it's a development tool. I mean, but it was not a way for us to cheap up on the construction. We basically are going to build this to the town road standard. Same, if you ever look at our plans, it's actually the town public road cross-section on the plans. But it just allows us to get a little more flexible with the curvilinear of the nature. But I think I told this commission before, you can actually go a little steeper too, but these roads are actually pretty flat.
Okay. And is there any increased safety risk? Because that, and a lot of people talk about the fire trucks, right, being able to turn around or anything like that?
No, I think, to be honest, we exceed your town road standards in terms of width. So your town road standards say, we can have a twenty-two-foot ride road, we went with a twenty-four-foot road. The cul-de-sac is a, those are sixty-foot cul-de-sacs on the two main roads. I did a Google search of most of your cul-de-sacs around town, and they vary from fifty to sixty, unless you have a center-planted island and they get bigger. So we didn't, we didn't skimp on the ability for vehicles to get in and out of the property.
Okay. I'm good for now. Thanks, sir.
Go ahead, Scott.
My questions have actually been asked, so I'm good for now.
Right, Liz?
Just one question, when you're talking about roads and widths and things like that. I'm trying to go back in my mind, thinking of planning a two-car garage for each of these houses, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Because that led to me thinking, oh, well, how wide is the road, and will people need to park on the road? And it's a private road, so you can't limit parking to, you know, overnight parking or things like that. So if they're wider, then it should be-
Yeah, everyone will have a two-car garage with a driveway big enough for two car, and we try to set the houses back that, you know, it doesn't impend on the sidewalk. While it is private road, I think Legal Traffic Authority probably still has some jurisdiction over what we can park. So I don't know what the normal, whatever, whatever the town standard is for other roads. Because even your limited local public road is only twenty-two feet wide. So we'll have to work with the Legal Traffic Authority about whatever signage has to be. Typically, on a twenty-four-foot road, you can park on one side and still get by, but you can't park on two sides. It's just too narrow.
Okay. And one quick reminder, I think, Shannon, the other map that you had that had the frontage along Moria, that's going to be easement, correct?
It's a, yes. So initially, we were, we had initial plan that we were asking for some waivers on the lot frontages, and that requires a buffer planting to get that. But we revised the plan, so we don't need any more waivers. We meet all the standards. But the carriers felt that that buffer was still important to both Moria Road and actually to the backyards of these individuals. So I think we're calling it a landscape buffer easement. So later on in the plan set, we've actually put together a planting plan, give you a series of species. But yes, so it's a, yes, that will be to the point where that, and I assume the easement will be in favor of the homeowners association, so any homeowner can't go in there and decide they want to cut down all the trees, not to mention it's part of our approval. So from a zoning perspective, it can be regulated forever. But, but the, the goal is, we wanted to make sure, Moria almost felt, too, we want the backyards to have some privacy. But at the same point, when you come down Moria Road, it's still going to be, feel like a vegetated, I guess, streetscape.
Okay, that's, that's good to hear. I've been involved in other organizations where easements are a good idea and things creep into the easement, so I'm, I'm assuming that people wouldn't want every, their backyard on display for everyone.
And, but, the developer will be doing the plantings. So the plantings will be put in place at the time of when the house is developed. Many times, the carriers actually go ahead and put the plantings in early on, so they get time to mature before the house is even coming to date. And I think we, I've seen that on other carrier projects for get those in the ground and let them kind of mature over time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Liz.
Shannon, I think it's for you. Just going back to the stormwater detention basins. So town will take that on as their responsibility to maintain, or that stays separate because it's private. How's that work?
So the entire drainage system will stay with the homeowners association, and then there's a requirement as part of their long-term maintenance plan to issue reports to town staff by January thirty-first of each year for the prior year, so that we know basic maintenance has been done. It's typically not overly extensive, but catch basins need to be cleaned. The detention basins will need to be cleaned out of sediment, and occasionally they'll need to be cut back. And so those are the reports that'll come in. We need that as part of the town's MS4 permit.
Okay. And then other questions also for you with regards, you talked briefly on open items. It sounds like, based on correspondence you sent to us and kind of where you are, you're very close in terms of open items. There's not many that currently remain.
Correct. With the plans that, I think there were plans that dated last Monday or Tuesday. Mr. Seer and I took a look at those. There were a handful of critical items, and that's what resulted. We conveyed that verbally to the applicant at the end of last week. And then that's what resulted in the revised documents that came through Friday and then this afternoon, and were posted this afternoon.
Okay. No further questions.
Thank you. James?
Shannon, I think this is probably for you too. Going back to Matt's question about the pest management plan, who enforces that and who, where is the accountability?
So the homeowners association will, obviously, if there's a concern that the town can step in as far as a zoning violation and a violation of the wetlands permit and TPZ. If there's a concern that's actionable, it can run with the deeds as well. We have had attorneys file these with the deeds in the home, so not only with a HOA, it can also be put in with the deeds to the home. We have seen some things drop out of deeds as things move on in twenty, thirty, forty years, but that's another option for including it in the deed as well.
Yeah, because education and best practices only go so far, right? I mean, it's better than nothing. But I think the, by the time something is found out, the damage has already been done to the surrounding land. So I'm just, I'm just more speaking out loud.
Correct. So that's, it's incumbent on everybody. It's a, it's a general, you know, a general education that needs to take place across the board as to how individuals are maintaining their lawn, not just here, but quite honestly, anywhere. All of our lawns drain to a stormwater system or a wetland in Farmington. And the stormwater systems all drain to a river, brook, or wetland in Farmington. So you pay attention to the newsletters. We are repeatedly putting in documentation about best management practices, not only for pesticides and herbicides, but pet waste, disposal of chemicals, et cetera. So it's as much as folks want to take responsibility for their own maintenance and their own actions, and it's not just here, it's throughout the community. And some are very diligent, and some unfortunately are not. And then we, we have discussions with those that are not.
Thank you for the clarification. No questions.
Thank you. And Matthew?
Yes, my question's about traffic. All right. So as you can see by our attendance, COVID is changing, going back to the office. So my question is in regards to that and the impact on traffic. You said that there were two separate readings, I believe you said, January, March. So question one would be, was there a major difference between those two times when we did the traffic study?
Sure, yeah. So we are, we conducted counts in January, and then part of the public comments were some observations that made, so I don't know the extent of where they took them, what they did. But just to do our due diligence, we, based on the accounts that were observed in March by the public, they were about twenty percent higher than our January count, so we did increase our through volumes by twenty percent just to see what the results would be, and we found that they, that both intersections still operate well.
Okay, so the follow-up to that is, as it continues, the model where people are going back to work, if it increases another twenty percent, are we still in the same safe zone where the intersection still operates as it should?
I didn't look at that, but our trip generation and the impact that our project will have on the traffic, which is what we're supposed to be looking at, will stay the same. So the trip generation numbers that I presented, that's all pre-COVID information, and that's all industry standard. So, so those won't change. So the impact of the development will not change.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Awesome.
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, I was sad to hear that we cannot do the sidewalk. I thought that was a great idea by one of the residents. But I guess we have the culvert in the way, right? Correct. So we will be disturbing the land that we're talking about. Regarding correspondence, the document that we received from Trinkis Engineering, were the questions ever answered?
We received a response from Mr. Daley this afternoon to that memo, and it was posted this afternoon.
To all the, from Trinkis to all of it? Okay, okay. Clearly, I missed it, the responses.
I think it came, again, Madam Chair, it was this afternoon.
Okay, all right, fine. I too, okay. Okay. I think he brings up a lot of important points regarding groundwater. I know this project has been approved by inland wetland commission. We all know that we're talking about a very special property. So I guess we'll be reading this. Like, help me go through it, because I don't want to make this meeting longer, but there are definitely things that-
Okay. Well, I believe Mr. Trinkis is in the audience. He might have some comment during public comment, and then it would be Mr. Daley's choice whether or not he wants to respond to that this evening.
Okay. I'll think about that. I guess, yes, you do. Yes, that's right. You're next. Thank you. Yep. I'm almost done, sir, and I will open it to the public. And you in this room will have, you'll be able to go first, and then we will take questions from people online. Thank you. And I don't know if this is for Mr. Hoheb, but- and I don't know if this is for Mr. Hoheb, but uh the one thing that I'm just, I guess, struggling with is, you know, I know we have approvals, we have tons of documentation. Um, the developer has gone above and beyond making sure that um they're doing the right thing, and it looks all great. Uh, then why, why wouldn't they develop with more houses than less? Like, is it the the land that's that we're saying is so special? I'm just, I can't, I don't know the answer to that. Why we're dealing with fewer houses than you're permitted it for, or could be.
The record, Tom Daly. Well, really, you're um two things. Your regulations specify two um couple of things. So your regulations specify calculations, and you have to do a mathematical calculation. And by that, I think we're permitted by forty lots or something. But then your regulations actually go beyond and said, yeah, but you gotta do a conventional subdivision and show us what that is. And we provided a conventional subdivision that shows somewhere in the range of twenty-five lots. And so the other thing is, the carriers, while your minimum lot standard is fifteen thousand square feet, we didn't think, yes, we could probably have squeezed out a few more lots here, but we didn't think it it was not what they wanted in in the spirit of things. But one of the the critical things was the other upland area that is, I think, by Mr. Roy's house, that would actually require to come through Bristol Roads, which is totally permissible, but it adds a complexity to the town of Farmington, because now you know, the garbage truck has to go through Bristol and go through there. I mean, we've done it on other subdivisions, but there's a complexity and some additional effort that has to become there. So we kind of really just never even looked at what the development po- you know, putting cluster lots on that because it had a so, but as I said, your regulations theoretically by calculations, we could have more. Theoretically, we could have maybe got um more with um, you know, making the lots smaller. But the carriers were not interested in making every lot the bare minimum size.
Okay, thank you. Alright, is ready? Alright, thank you, public, for your patience. And uh if you would like to speak in favor or opposition or have questions, please come to the podium, identify yourself, your name and address, please.
My name is Frank Carlosi. I live at Two Tall Timbers Drive. I moved there in nineteen eighty-seven. We've experienced many, first of all, let me just say thank you to all of you for all of your volunteer work. Thank you to you for asking the question on the pest control. Um, thank you for you for bringing up the question about why isn't not a covenant, not a restriction, but it's going to be an education only. Everything that the carriers represent is fine. And we know they're going to build nice houses. But there's a lot of selective ways they're answering the questions. We got a study, a traffic study saying, oh, there's going to be one car per household on the road. But we're building houses with two-car garages, and we're building the road long wider so we can park cars on the street. You know, it's a little fixish, thick note, wh- whatever they're gonna call it, they gloss over it. As far as what I'm calling about and I've been asking about, and I've never gotten an answer. I went to the March for me, I met John Carrier there and his sister. I said to them, you're gonna build the house across the street from me. And that house, you're gonna, I guarantee that there'll be no water in the basement of that house. Now, I've lived on my house since nineteen eighty-seven. We've never had water in the basement. But if you come out, we got water on the lawn, we got water everywhere. Water and water deteriorates the roots on the trees. I've taken down trees every year, two to three trees come down every year because of that. Now, what I did ask him was, how come you don't give me a guarantee that you build this development? Street, I don't water in the basement. No, we don't do that. The engineer here, he talks about Mr. Roy's property. Oh, his property is thirteen hundred feet away. You never answered my question about my property. You answered Mr. Roy's property. His elevation is this much higher, the water is going to flow down from his elevation. How about the elevation from my house? You never answered that question. So the point I'm making is railroad cherry picking, let's call it selective answers. And you guys are all asking great questions, and I appreciate that, but you're getting selective answers. They avoid answering the questions that we keep asking about the property across the street. They never speak about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon, we're gonna just keep going and then.
I would suggest, Madam Chair, we keep going and then they and we'll hit online, and then we can do the written correspondence.
Yeah, yeah, that's perfect. Thank you.
Um, good evening. Excuse me. Uh, for the record, my name is Stephen Trinkus. I'm a licensed professional engineer uh from Southbury, Connecticut. Um, I was retained by the group Save Morea Road to review this application. Um, I reviewed the original plans, um a subsequent revision where I dated my letter March sixth. I have looked at the plans that were submitted about a week ago. Um, I did not know anything new had been submitted today, including Mr. Daly's response. But, you know, I'm gonna go through um, you know, my comments. Um, you know, I've done land use since the late seventies, since I was in college. I became licensed as a PE in eighty-eight in Connecticut, probably similar to Tom, maybe before or after, I don't know. Um, you know, we've run into each other professionally in the past. Um, I'm also an expert in low-impact development, which is a focus on water quality runoff and also runoff volumes. And, you know, peak rate attenuation does nothing for volume, and volume is a primary driver of flooding issues. Um, going back to the density question, um, I've worked in many states, uh many towns in Connecticut, and a lot of them do have cluster regulations. Um, some do a simple calculation. As uh Tom said, I had a project and Win said that that's exactly what it was. It was a paper exercise. Um, but what you also have to look at is kind of the carrying capacity of the land. Now, you've got that large chunk of land uh which comes off Bristol. Um, I've worked in Wilton Westport where we had the same issues where you gotta go from one town to the other. Um, it's common for municipalities to have uh inner-town agreements for prior police. It is not rocket science. It's a very common agreement. Um, but the issue is, is there is no sewer available on the Bristol side. So those lots in that upper, you know, upland area would have to have onsite septic systems. And it is very flat, and I would submit that if you dug test pits up there, you probably would not find suitable soils to support the ten or twelve lots that were shown in that upper corner. Um, so now we're not putting lots in that upper corner. We're now taking the two smaller parcels off Morea Road, which are pretty much bracketed by wetlands on east, west, and to the north of the site, and we're gonna basically cram down twenty-five lots into these two small parcels. Um, I know Wetlands has approved it with approximately twenty-five foot between the back of the house and the limit of site disturbance. Um, that is often inadequate for the homeowners. Um, there was a project in Ridgefield a number of years ago called Turner Hill off Ridgeberry Road. It was exactly a similar project. It was a cluster development, smaller lots, and the houses were actually small. This is back in the late nineties. They're about eighteen hundred square foot houses, so not not very big compared to a lot of many other projects in Ridgefield. But what happened is the homeowners, their yards were so small. They kept pushing the yards out. They pushed playsets out, not just into a buffer, they actually pushed them out to the open space that the town of Ridgefield owned. So these lots, by not having really adequate backyards for families, you're gonna get what is commonly known as a creeping lawn syndrome. They are gonna extend out past that twenty-five foot. I will almost guarantee it because people want their single-family house, and they want their play yard, especially with kids. Um, so you're gonna see that extend out much closer to the wetlands than what uh Wetlands approved, as far as that goes. Um, going back to the soil testing, the data that uh Mylon or SLR, it's I've called in Mylon Mc Room for a number of years, so it's hard to get SLR out some days. Um, the testing that was done on three-eight was only a few of the test pits. There's many other test pits out there. So one of my obvious questions is why wasn't the groundwater monitoring done in every one of the test pits out there? And why was it just done on one day? You know, under DEP, and we're not talking septic systems, but to determine the maximum groundwater, you monitor weekly from February first to May thirty-first. I'm not suggesting you had to do it weekly, but as this year did not have a lot of snowpack, we had a lot of rain. It would have been nice to have, you know, even every two weeks, a set of reading on all of the holes, because you do have some very high groundwater out here. You have some that are a foot and a half down. And other ones, three to four foot down. I think there was a couple at five. Um, as Tom noted, many of the houses are elevated, um, so that the footing drains can drain to uh the conventional stormwater system in the road. But what I did not see on the plans is what is the invert of the footing drain pipe at the catch basin or manhole? If it's at the bottom of the manhole where the invert of the main drainage pipes is in the event, and again, it depends on the rainfall intensity, but we see a lot more short-duration, high-intensity storms. Drops a lot, you know, you get three inches in two hours, as an example, not uncommon. And what happens is if these ba- if the basin perhaps backs up and the water backs up the drainage pipes, if the footing drains were at the invert of that uh pipe, the water from the uh footing drains isn't going to be able to drain out, because it's going to be subject to a backwater condition, meaning that there's a pool here. I can't add water to it. You know, the pool stops me uh from doing that. I had a site in Westport where the town had an issue with the drainage pipe, a house that was built uh by uh somebody else. I was called in afterwards, figured out what was going on, had gravity footing drains. The town pipe backed up because of clogging issue with the outlet. And basically, the client's footing drains did not drain out, and he got a foot and a half of water in a brand-new house. He was obviously not happy. Typically, when we connect footing drains to a drainage pipe, um, at least when I do it, I we come in above the top of the pipe, then we drop the water down. That way, the footing drain water can always get in there and is not subject to the flows within the pipe itself. However, if you do that, these houses are gonna have to all elevate, because a lot of this is fifteen, eighteen, maybe there are some twenty-four inch pipes. So if you elevate something a foot and a half, obviously, where the water's starting at the house has to also elevate a foot and a half or so um as far as that goes. Um, so I think, you know, the groundwater issue is a serious concern. When you're surrounded by wetlands on pretty mild topography, um, you know, you're gonna expect to find high groundwater out here. I sure would, um, having dug test pits uh all over the place um as far as that goes. Um, I believe the clustering of these twenty-five homes, I'm basically the two small upland areas, is not meeting the intent of a cluster regulation. In all the towns I've worked in, if we show ten lots in a given upland area and we cluster it, we still put ten lots in that area, but we provide more open space around those ten lots by shrinking the lot size within that area. So you would have actually had three clusters uh on this site in each of the upland areas. You would have had no more lots than they show on their conventional plan. But you would, they would be smaller, roughly half an acre, which I think these are. But you'd have much more open space. You'd have much greater buffers to the wetlands. Instead of effectively cramming down twenty-five lots, we're under conventional zoning. You could fit ten or twelve. You know, that's overburdening the carrying capacity of the land. This is one of the aspects of low-impact development is working with the natural landform and not overburdening the natural landform. And in this particular case, it's my professional opinion, you're doing exactly that. Um, it is common practice that footing drains never go to detention basins. Uh, for the primary reason, A, it's groundwater, so you should be going to daylight. But in this particular case, because of the flatness of the site, they simply cannot go to daylight, which, you know, you want to do. Um, putting some pumps in means the homeowner needs pretty much a backup generator. Um, in the event power goes out, um you know, you need something to make sure the water will get out of there. Um, but if you're adding footing drain water to the detention basins, you have to make some educated assumptions. It's how much water is going to come from those drains into the basin. Because the basin's got to handle that, and there's been no uh calculations uh supporting that uh going forward. Um, numerous lots, I'll talk about lots five, six, and seven. The grading does not grade away from the house. The Connecticut Building Code requires a two percent pitch for a minimum of ten feet away from the house. And on some, on these, these lots, the actual grade from the back of lot goes towards the house. So it doesn't comply with the building code. Additionally, under the building code, if you assume you have uh twelve inches for framing for your first floor, requires an eight-inch exposure of the concrete to finish grade. In many cases, we don't have that uh that particular requirement. Um, the stormwater management system is consisting of hydrodynamic, well, catch basins, online hydrodynamic separators, and uh some types of detention basins. Um, an online separator, while they do have a bypass mechanism in them for supposedly larger storm events, they are also very inefficient at reducing total suspended solids and other pollutants because of the online configuration. Um, you can cite the New Ham- University of New Hampshire Stormwater Center, where they actually looked at online versus offline separators. And you go from seventy-five percent total suspended solid removal all the way down to twenty-eight percent when it's an online configuration. That's a significant difference, because what happens, even with the internal bypass, you wind up stirring up the material that has already been trapped um in these systems um as far as that goes. So the detention ponds originally did not have four bays. Now we do have uh uh four bays on the two ponds, but according to the DEP manual, the purpose of a four bay is to trap sediment and prevent it from getting resuspended. So there's several criteria that have to go along with that. One is a four to six-foot depth, a minimum two-to-one length-to-width ratio from the inlet to the outlet side. Um, and generally, you just leave them as dirt. If you riprap it, you you can't really clean sediment out of dirt without de-watering it and literally moving the rocks by hand and vacuuming the silt out. So you know, you leave it as dirt or grass, but the purpose is to have the deeper depth so that when new water comes into the four bay, it comes into the top, and it doesn't stir up the sediments that's already been trapped. In the particular case here, these four bays are only providing half a foot of storage. So what's gonna happen is some sediment will settle out, and a new rainfall event is gonna come in and stir up that fine sediment and put it right back in suspension, and then push it out uh to the rest of the detention basin. Um, all basins have emergency spillways. It's a standard engineering practice that from the uh hundred-year elevation, the water surface elevation over the spillway, that you have one foot to the top of the berm. It's called freeboard. Um, these basins don't have that. Um, there's an invert, there's a one foot from the free uh, I believe, the uh to- top of the spillway, or I should say the inverse of the spillway to the pot- top of the pond, uh the top of the berm. But when you add the water in it, you don't have the one-foot freeboard. That's a standard uh engineering principle that's been in use since the late seventies uh when I started doing this stuff um as far as that goes. Um, on the level spreaders at the outlets, um the detail shows a concrete curb, which is appropriate, but on the plan, it's not shown. Is it all along the downhill side? Is it wrapping around the ends? Um, we don't know, because it's not shown on the site plan, but on the detail, it does have a concrete curb, which is the proper methodology for a level spreader, so that water going into the stone uh swale, I think is what Tom has, will fill up, and then it overflows the length of the concrete curb, basically, and that's what you want. But without knowing the extent of it, if it's only a portion of the downhill side, the water will find the path of least resistance, and that may not be over the top of the level spreader as far as that goes. Um, there's now a riprap filter berm across the bottom of these basins. That's not gonna do anything from a water quality standpoint. It's a pile of rocks. Uh, you know, any kind of suspended material in the water is gonna pass right through the riprap. It doesn't do anything from a water quality standpoint. Um, there's also an underdrain shown in the bottom of these basins. Now, the bottom of the basin is dead level. Where the underdrain is, is the same elevation as the perimeter. So how does water from the perimeter of the uh basin get to the underdrain when it's dead level? Water needs a pitch to tell it where to go. If there is no pitch, it's gonna sit. It's never gonna get to the basin to uh get to the underdrain itself. Uh, excuse me. Uh, there are similar grading issues on uh houses nine, ten, eleven that don't meet the building code. Um, let's see. Cause I went through each of these. Oh, on the erosion side, there are several temporary sediment basins shown on the plan. They're basically, I um, I believe, an oval or an ellipse. It's shaded. Um, there's no grading. So how does a contractor know how to build a temporary sediment basin when you don't give them the information to it? There are volume calculations on the plan, but that's not gonna help him out building it. You've got to show the grading. You have to show an outlet structure and how it's gonna be hand, how the water's gonna get directed to it. Without it, it's not in confine- uh compliance with the two thousand two erosion guidelines um as far as that goes. Let's see. There's Well, one basin is in the upper right-hand corner of this plan right here. Right there. That's one of the basins. The other basin is on the other portion of development, but they're all similar, and they're they're pretty much identical as far as their components um as far as that goes. Um, so, you know, the erosion, you know, the some temporary sediment basins, there's inadequate information for a contractor to be able to uh build those in any shape or form um as far as that goes. Um, the other interesting thing that I found is now we're putting, well, The other interesting thing that I found is now we're putting, well, we've been putting from, I think, day one. A bio retention media in the bottom of a detention pond. You know, bio retention systems are one of the most common L I D practices, but they are designed to treat the water quality volume, which is a volume from one inch of rainfall over the contributing area. They are not meant to be placed, the media is not meant to be placed in the bottom of a detention pond. And the reason is it's mostly sand, a little bit of compost and topsoil. But when you then detain water above the bio retention media. What happens is you get fines that migrate down to this media surface. And basically will clog it. There's been several case studies presented it. The L I D conferences and the, well, before COVID, pretty much every year and a half. That, you know, showed this as a major problem. In one in North Carolina, for a Walmart facility, a layer of fine sediment, an eighth inch thick. Clogged the bio retention media and prevented, not slowed down, prevented infiltration from occurring. That's the whole purpose of bio retention. So putting bio retention media in the bottom of the detention basin. Doesn't do you any good and it's going to compromise the actual functionality of the basins. As these basins are pretty much dry basins with an underdrain. They are not high on the list of great water quality treatment. The best water quality treatment practices in the D E P manual are wet basins, either. Constructed wetland basins, extended detention basins, because they have a permanent pool, generally one foot deep or less. High and low marsh areas densely planted with native wetland plants that provide really good water quality treatment. What we don't have for this plan is. An analysis of the pollutant loads that will be created by this development and there will be substantial. You'll have. Total suspended solids from sanding operations on the road, even though most towns have migrated towards. De-icing agents in advance of snowstorms. Towns still use sand on the roads when they need to. You also will have metals and hydrocarbons from the movement of cars and delivery trucks in and out of there. To a lesser degree, you get some nutrient loading. We get about forty percent of our nutrients nitrogen and phosphorus that falls on as atmospheric deposition. It's occurring right now outside. It occurs on dry days. It lands on impervious cover and gets washed off. There is an approach to calculating this and assessing the. Effectiveness of the treatment systems to reduce them, but we don't have that. We also have no reduction in runoff volume. You know, all of this water does go into this large wetland area surrounding these upland areas and. I really take exception to the, well, we're giving seventy acres to the town. Well, the only upland you're really giving is that piece off the cul-de-sac in Bristol. The rest of it is wetlands, which is pretty much hands off from development. You know, you could try to ask the wetlands board to build something in there and they would send you packing, at least in ninety percent of the towns I work in. So, you know, most of the open space is unusable land in the first place. The land that might be partially valuable is that piece off the cul-de-sac in Bristol. As far as that goes. See. You know, in the drainage report, you know, they talked about the treatment train of, you know, four foot catch basin sumps, hydrodynamic separators. Sediment four bays, level spreaders. Well, first off, a level spreader is not a water treatment device. That's a water dispersal device. Catch basins with four foot sumps, even hooded outlets are a secondary practice in the D E P manual as they are not great at water quality improvement. Separators are not unless they're in an offline configuration. And sediment four bays are part of the basin. They're not a standalone practice. So if you're doing a detention basin, say a constructed wetland. You will have a four bay, but there's a value for pollutant removal for that practice. The four bay is not a standalone. Item that you get credit for. Deep some catch basins are really dependent on being cleaned, especially if they, if they had hooded outlets. I know many municipalities and including my own in Southbury. The D P W department quite honestly hates the hooded outlets that are on several of our commercial properties. And on some of the local roads have been put in maybe in the past ten or fifteen years. And what D P W actually will do if they get, if they can get away with it is they take the hood off and they don't put it back. It's either PVC, you know, elbow down or the worst ones are the cast iron ones that sit on a hook. But those are also extremely heavy and they put them off. I don't know what they do with them. But they go away because they are quite honestly a pain in the neck to clean the basins out. You know, most municipalities, and it's not a knock on Farmington or any other town. Are very poor at maintaining the catch basins. I've lived my current house for sixteen years. And the catch basins on my road have been cleaned twice in sixteen years. That's it. They're supposed to be cleaned twice a year. But, you know, it's a lot of work and it just doesn't get done. That's the reality. So with an H O A. What guarantee is that this whole drainage system, the catch basins, the hydrodynamic separator, the four bay is going to be maintained? And I think it goes back to the point on, you know, the education for the, you know, integrated pest management plan, you know. Homeowners are going to do what they want to do. If we want to go to Home Depot and buy Scott's, you know, weed preventer. I'm just, I'm unfortunately, I wouldn't put it down just where my, you know. Two dandelions are, I'm going to put it over my lawn so I don't get another hundred dandelions. That's the reality of homeowner use. And it's nice to try to educate people. The reality is it's very hard to enforce. It is extremely hard to enforce anytime it's been implemented on a development like this, as far as that goes. Because the four bays are shallow, they don't contain ten percent of the water quality volume, which is the D E P requirement. As far as that goes. And on page eight of my report, I go into the, the volume increases and this is taken right out of the applicant's report. So, you know, there's substantial increases in runoff, especially for the smaller storms. Now, if the applicant analyzed the water quality storm, which is one inch of rain in twenty-four hours. I think you're going to see a much greater volume increase than the thirty-three percent that you see for a two-year rainfall event. As you get up to a hundred year event, it's only about a fifteen percent increase in volume. But the smaller storms have a significant increase. One of the other aspects that was not provided is what's called a groundwater recharge volume. This is a volume per the D E P manual that. You're supposed to infiltrate back into the ground to maintain pre-development hydrology. Because every time we pave over, you know, a portion of the property with the road, the driveway, the roof. Perhaps a swimming pool in the backyard or patio. We're reducing the amount of rainfall that can get back into the ground. So the groundwater recharge volume has not been provided, nor has there been any evidence to support that it can even be provided on this particular site. Tom mentioned earlier that the roof drains may be perforated. I assume that's from the house going out to the drainage. You know, catch basin that it's tying into. But just because you put a perforated pipe in, if the underlying soil around it. Cannot infiltrate the water, that perforation pipe doesn't do any good. So, you know, simply putting perforated pipe in doesn't mean equate to infiltration of runoff. Increased runoff volumes are well documented, not just in Connecticut, but really throughout the country. As being the primary driver of adverse impacts to water course channels because. Any stream will flow for a given rainfall event at a certain height of water for a certain period of time. When you have increased runoff volumes, what it does, especially with a detention basin that reduces the peak rate to pre-development is. It stays at that water surface for a much longer period of time and the stream does not like that. It's, it's stressed out, so the stream starts eroding. And the banks collapse because the stream itself is looking to get back to a hydrologic equilibrium. And that's the only way the stream can do that is by eroding and increasing the cross section. As it does that, any eroded material gets flushed. Further downstream and it gets deposited whenever the water flows down. This is why the, one of the. Criteria in this two thousand four stormwater quality manual, and I believe the updated one that's, I think, a draft by D E P at the current time. You have the channel protection volume and this is a way to. Prevent the adverse impacts receiving streams by taking. The post-development two-year runoff. Peak rate and throttling it down to fifty percent of the pre-development. So what you're doing is. You're lowering that water surface in the stream for an extended period of time, but now it is in the more stable section of the channel. That has to be done by the outlet structure, which would require most likely a lot larger basin than what we've seen here today. As far as that goes, there's also some differences, at least in the last set of plans that I reviewed. Of the volume for four bays. You know, in the routing analysis versus a computational table, I'm not going to get into those particular items. But the, the bottom line is there will be, you know, adverse impacts to downgrading areas. From stormwater here, both from a water quality and a runoff volume. I also believe professionally that it's overburdening the capacity of the land to support this. I think one of the commissioners, you know, where there was a comment made by the other person about, you know. Trees being impacted by, you know, increased groundwater tables. I'd like to address that as, as not as an engineer, but as somebody has a bachelor of science in forestry from New Hampshire, which was my undergraduate degree. Tree roots want to be in an aerobic environment, but they want to be close to groundwater. And that's why in test pits, if you do not see modeling, which is indications of groundwater, but you have a layer of roots. The layer of roots is pretty much the defining. Area of the groundwater somewhere a few inches below that. Because they want to be aerobic. Now, when, you know, saturation occurs because of, you know. Anything, I mean, it could be a beaver dam, you know, the ponds of water where there was never ponding. Or, you know, increased runoff volumes, as the ground becomes more saturated. And the tree roots now become in a saturated zone, they will die. They don't like being in that environment and they will die and you get what I call standing cordwood. The tree itself will die because it cannot survive in those environments. So, you know, this project, you know, while the cluster is a admirable concept versus conventional zoning. This particular plan, in my professional opinion, is overwhelming the carrying capacity of these two small parcels that everything is being crammed into. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Arlene Klein and I live at forty-three Coke Farms Road. I have owned property in Farmington since nineteen seventy-eight. And I have owned my home on Coke Farms Road for nineteen years. First, I would like to say, my group that there's several of us, save Mariah Road. We did a petition, we, we went out in several ways. We got four hundred and ten people. To sign our petition against this project. On this, on the petition, the signers include a Farmington state representative. A state senator whose district includes Farmington, a Farmington town council member. The chair of the zoning board of appeals. A member of the Water Pollution Control Authority and past commissioner of planning, zoning and zoning board of appeals. A commissioner on the board of assessment appeals. And a past inland wetlands commissioner, among other signatures that I think that you might recognize. Seventy-four signatures are Bristol residents opposing any portion of this development coming through. Their neighborhood, Plank Hill Road, Cherry Hill Road. I think you've heard from some of them and I believe a few of them have sent in letters. I want to address the conversation that I had with one of the commissioners back in November. The conversation kind of went like, well, you know, you have cluster housing in Coke Farms, so it kind of sets a precedent. So. You know, it's kind of difficult to say no because that's a precedent. Coke Farms was approved in nineteen eighty-two and the construction began in nineteen eighty-four. Several things were done back then that we would not do now. There was. Pressure-treated wood was used to put in decks. Oil tanks were put in the ground shortly after that. They realized that was a big mistake in the area that is wet. So then. Homeowners had to take them out of the ground if they wanted to get. Refinancing or to sell their homes. So, and those things greatly damaged the soil and caused contamination to wetlands. And it wasn't until two thousand and four. That the Farmington River Watershed Association launched, launched a water quality monitoring program. Before that, nobody cared about how polluted the wetlands were in the area. No homes in Coke Farms encroach wetlands to the extent of the project that is being proposed to you today. My home sits on a rectangular lot. It's about point three seven of an acre, meaning that I have a sizable backyard. The wetlands on my property is behind the tree line, so there's no chance of lawn creep or the need for trespassing signs or medallions. Neighbors have put in above-ground pools, in-ground pools, patios, gazebos, playscapes, and even a tennis court. None of which encroach on any wetlands. Yards are large enough to accommodate our needs. And I don't know if that's the case with the proposed project. The Coke Farms properties that are but, the Coke Farms properties that are but Mariah Road. Are number seventy-eight and eighty-one Coke Farms and eight and nine Hartfield Lane. All of those properties have between point nine two and one point oh two of an acre. Far greater than any of the lots proposed by the developer. There's a culvert that flows under Coke Farms Road between number forty-eight and fifty-one Coke Farms on one side. And fifty-seven and sixty-one Coke Farms on the other, on the other. The buffers for the culvert to the property lines of these homes far exceed twenty-five percent, twenty-five feet. There's no chance of lawn creep or the need for trespassing signs or medallions. And the water table is well below street level. We have not ever had, nor do I believe we will ever have any flooding on Coke Farms Road. The majority of the proposed development will be an extension of Tall Timbers Drive. There are twenty-eight homes on Tall Timbers Drive. There's a diverse set of architecture. All types of modern Cape homes. Colonial homes. It's very diverse neighborhood. With the exception of three of the homes that have slightly less than an acre. All the homes in that project have one, have above an acre. The largest being one point six one acres. The proposed Mariah Road development is not in keeping with the character of that neighborhood. And the street, Tall Timbers is going to go in over Mariah and, and extend into that neighborhood and. It's not conforming to what exists there now. I urge the commissioners to walk the Mariah Road property, come in, well, you can't walk it, it's all wet. But come and see the Mariah Road property and the neighborhoods of Coke Farms, Tall Timbers and Old Pond. To understand the extent of the wetlands on the Mariah Road property and the topography, placement of homes and open spaces on the neighboring streets. From nineteen forty-eight to at least nineteen seventy-two. The Mariah Road property was leased by the Mariah family to the Connecticut State Board of Fisheries and Game. It's the predecessor to D. To be used, and this is a quote. In part, as a wildlife sanctuary, game management area and closed area. The wetlands commissioners who voted in favor of this project repeatedly use the word trade-off. In their decision. In other words, we were trading a twenty-five foot buffer in return for seventy-five acres. But the seventy-five acres, as, as Steve pointed out, the majority of it is wetlands. And as he just mentioned to you, that upper portion, which is off Plank Hill Road, is probably undevelopable. Bristol will not let us put the sewer line through there and it's probably too wet for any kind of septic system. So again, all you have is wetlands and undevelopable land. One of the wetlands commissioner, the one who voted against approving the project, says there is no trade-off. By allowing a high-density development with a twenty-five foot buffer, we will destroy this wildlife sanctuary by soil contamination and runoff. And we will not be gaining anything. The town as, Mrs., I'm sorry, Mancini said. Probably did try to purchase it and they couldn't come to an agreement on the price. There are other avenues. I think some of the land trusts would be interested in looking at it. I don't believe this high-density project. Is the answer to what needs to be done over there. I sent a picture of Holly Lane in Snowberry Cobble. It's, it's in your correspondence. This is an example of a small yard abutting wetlands. The back of the house is twenty-four to twenty-five feet from the wetlands. If you walk behind the house, you sink into mud. This caution tape. That they've put back there so people can't walk from, from each end of the house behind the house because that's how wet it is. As with medallions proposed by carrier, there's a no trespassing sign. You can see lawn creep in that picture. And a yard so close to wetlands, in my opinion, is dangerous for children. Why would we allow this? Why, why, why would this be necessary? As part of their H O A regulations, it seems the developer will require homeowners to agree, to agree to certain types of fertilizer. And will put rules in their H O, H O A handbook regarding encroachment on wetlands. It is unknown whether or not homeowners will abide by these rules. And these types of rules are difficult to enforce. When they are enforced, it's usually after the fact. After somebody has put down the fertilizer, after they've put it down, a playscape that encroaches on the wetlands. I lived in a cluster development for quite a number of years, Farmington Chase. And everybody had their little handbook for a number of years. And after a while, you don't know what happened to the handbook. And then when somebody sells the house to somebody else. They have, you have to go to the management company to get yourself another copy of the, the handbook, because you don't know where your copy of the handbook is. And over the years, things get, get forgotten and, and people. And over the years, things get, get forgotten and, and people start doing things that, that they kind of want to do. So it's very hard to enforce rules in an HOA handbook. Other developers feel the Carrier Group is receiving preferential treatment. I started to get phone calls. I received a call from a developer who explained that he was required to adhere strictly to the town's strategic plan and plan of conservation and development. I looked up the minutes of the wetlands and the P and Z hearings regarding his project and he was correct. He was required to build one home per buildable acre, per buildable acre, strictly adhering to the stated R forty zoning requirement. He questioned why the Carrier project was being approved by wetlands. Another developer looked at Mr. Trinkus' report and this is a quote. "It is one of the most in-depth studies and information that I have ever seen. And the developer is not meeting a lot of the criteria that you have to meet." That's another developer who has developed stuff in town. We, we know of one developer that looked at the Maria Road property and walked away because the area is too wet. He said, he, you can't build there. That was his comment. On June fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-two, Bulwark LLC filed an application for lots eighty-one twenty and eighty-one twenty-two on Colt Highway. During their presentation, their representative asked why he was being given such a hard time when the commissioners had just granted a twenty-five-foot buffer referring to the Carrier Group. So, i- i- it's, it's, it will set a precedent that you will be difficult to undo when other developers come calling and asking, how come he got a twenty-five-foot buffer? Even though the wetlands commissioners added language to the Carrier resolution stating that the twenty-five-foot buffer is a one-time exception, other developers will challenge it. I believe familiarity and influence make it difficult for this project to be judged fairly. I find it troubling that the carriers serve on several commissions and committees, committees in town that they then look for, for decisions regarding their own real estate development projects. Johnny Carrier is on the town council. He's also the town council liaison to the Wetlands Commission and a past member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Patrick Carrier is a commissioner on the P and Z board. How can we as a community feel that we are being fairly represented in this process when there are conflicts of interest between a developer's personal business matters and activities in front of these boards? In two thousand and eleven, Johnny Carrier, as a candidate for the Zoning Board of Appeals, stated, and this is a quote, you can find it in the, in the patch in two thousand and eleven. "When faced with applications looking for a variance or waiver in certain zoning regulations, one needs to use the town's strategic plan, plan of conservation and development and experienced staff as guidance to make de- decisions for the benefit of the town." How does this project benefit the town? I submitted three patch articles to you describing the extensive flooding and road closures on Maria Road in two thousand and eleven. This flooding occurred in March, August and September of that year. In other words, there really is no dry season in order to build. Um, the other thing I'd like to say about this is there was extensive talk about a beaver that was causing problems on the Maria Road in, in terms of flooding. Yes, there is a beaver, but the beaver is not the main cause. And Mr. Daly, one of his remarks in, in one of the wetlands hearings said, "As long as there is a beaver, you will have, you will have flooding." That's really not the case. If you read these three articles and I, I'm begging you to please look at these articles about the flooding. I submitted an article by Eric Rosten from Bloomberg News. I hope all of you will have a chance to read the entire article. It describes a recent study that looked only at inland wetlands. It states, "A fifth of the earth's wetlands have been destroyed by hu- humans, a cumulative area larger than India." "The United States alone is responsible for fifteen percent of this global loss, more than any other country." Should we allow a development that has a potential of destroying more wetlands? Lastly, somebody mentioned that I should say this to you. I worked for the Hartford for fourteen years. I, I went around the country locating satellite offices, um, for, for, for the Hartford. Some of these locations were built-to-suit projects. I worked with developers all over the country. I can tell you with complete certainty, the Hartford would have walked away from this site. We never wanted to locate an office in a controversial location, location where we were not wanted, especially if it required deviations from regulations and special permits. We never wanted to be that business that came to that area and put up that building that nobody wanted. It doesn't help your reputation and it doesn't help your future business. I would say that this is not a development that will help them in any way and it certainly will not help our town. So I request that you vote no.
My name's Lisa Troy and I live on Tall Timbers Drive. Um, I hope the commissioners and town officials realize the presentations offered by the developers experts are, are not relaying the lived experiences of the residents adjacent to the Maria Road property. The residents who live here are the actual experts. First, regarding the issue of traffic safety, the entrance for this proposed, proposed development is to be directly across, across from Tall Timbers Drive. The sightline as you leave Tall Timbers is not clear. As vehicles come speeding around the bend from Bristol on the left and down Maria Road on the right, this new intersection you're creating will prove to be very dangerous. I know this because I live here. At the last hearing, the commissioners questioned why the Maria Road property was not acquired by the town. The property has been on Farmington's land acquisition list since two thousand and one. Uh, attempts were made to purchase the property and the land just did not appraise out to the expectation of the owner. The town remains interested in purchasing and preserving this land. The carriers, Farmington residents themselves are very much aware of how much opposition there is towards this development and aware the consensus in town is to preserve the entire parcel. This is still a viable alternative and I believe the town should be allowed to purchase the property. As building in Farmington continues at an unprecedented rate, more open space should be acquired before nothing is left. The Maria Road property serves as one of the largest wildlife habitats in Farmington. Tall Timbers and other abutting neighborhoods already have an abundance of bears, coyote, deer, bobcat, fisher cats wandering through our yards. Once any type of disturbance to this area begins, a large portion of their natural habitat will be lost. With the loss of land, more animals will be forced to seek refuge in our neighborhoods. As for the land the Carrier Group is giving back, the majority of the Maria Road property being donated is not land, but swamps, wetlands and streams. This is a fact noted during the two thousand and twenty-two Wetlands hearings by Commissioner, um, Commissioner Stanchion, a civil engineer and the lone commissioner who voted against this development stated. Um, have the commissioners been to the site and seen the water network with, which runs throughout Tall Timbers, Old Pond, Coke Farm neighborhoods? And have you seen how this development is encroaching into the wetlands? As a longtime resident, I've seen the flooding of the watershed areas throughout the Maria Road property and resulting road closures. I've seen water accumulating in yards, swelling of the vernal pools, ponds and streams. Any disturbance to this area, tree cutting, excavation, adding and fill, will affect where and how water currently flows. Any changes to the current landscape will change the flow of water where it accumulates and how it drains. Homeowners who live upstream from this proposed development, Snowberry Cobble, Plainville Avenue, even the Maria Road farmhouse, according to its owner, are experiencing water issues in and around their home. This town has seen the problems for both unsuspecting home buyers and existing homeowners when homes are built on unsuitable land or wetlands. We know homes in Snowberry Cobble have water problems because town building regulations were not followed. In this case, commissioners have the ability to enforce regulations, so why wouldn't you? Climate change is also a factor. The severity and frequency of storms have increased. We can't predict or control where water flows. As trees are cut down, changes are made to natural drainage basi- drainage basins and vernal pools, all which absorb excess water. You put the long-established homes and neighborhoods downstream of this project, Coke Farms, Old Pond, Tall Timbers, at ground zero for increased flooding and, uh, water accumulation. And Commissioner St. James, at the last hearing, you stated, "The town is stuck with what's approved." So why would the commissioners approve the Carrier Group's special permit? What is the benefit? Have the commissioners considered how this project will affect existing homes in this area? The developers' experts provided many solutions for the water issues in the provoke, proposed development, but they failed to provide fixes for the water issues that will occur and affect people who already live here. Understand that once changes are made to watersheds and land, they cannot be undone. Farmington's regulations were put in place to protect those of us in the community who do not have a voice. Enforcement and compliance of those regulations is key to safeguarding all residents of a community. According to the Town of Farmington's Plan of Conservation and Development, pages fourteen and seventeen, an analysis of existing land use was form, performed and determined that, and I quote, "The town is effectively built out." That report was done in two thousand and eighteen. This analysis states the vacant land whi- which is left is unsuitable for building. Another analysis by the Farmington High School Building Committee persu- performs site evaluations of several large parcels of vacant land in Farmington. According to the committee's May twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen minutes, the Maria Road property was voted down due to enviromission, environmental issues. And those issues are documented as, and I quote, "Significant wetlands and flooding concerns." Mr. Carrier is a voting member of that committee. Regulations should not be weakened or modified to accommodate developers. Our commissioners and town officials have an ethical responsibility to the residents directly impacted by this development. Decisions must be based on facts and science, such as, uh, the report provided by Mr. Trinkus. So based on Mr. Trinkus' findings, please explain how it benefits a community when regulations are ignored and too many homes are built on parcels of land that are too small. Explain how the Maria Road development is low impact in line with Farmington's Plan of Conservation and Development and Strategic Plan, both which call for the vigorous protect, protection of wetlands and recommends the town continue to acquire open space. Explain how granting exceptions, waivers or special permits allowing developers to circumvent regulations benefit Farmington. And how does it benefit Farmington when building occurs too close to wetlands in environmentally sensitive areas and flood zones? It's unclear to me why the Carrier Group would want to build homes in a flood zone. It's also unclear to me why Farmington's Wetland Commission would arbitrarily approve a one-time special permit for the Carrier Group, allowing homes to be built twenty-five feet from wetlands. Local developers have also questioned this ra- rationale. According to the July sixth, two thousand and twenty-two Wetland Minutes, many commissioners stated they were not comfortable allowing this reduced buffer. I couldn't understand why commissioners just didn't deny Carrier Group's request, which is in their purview. Then I learned Johnny Carrier, in his role on the town council, is a liaison to the Wetlands Commission. As a developer with matters before town agencies, I find it trou- troubling that Johnny and Patrick Carrier serve on various Farmington Town Oversight Commissions, the Town Council, a Wetlands Liaison, Planning and Zoning, Farmington High School Building Committee and the Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm concerned this poses a dilemma for their co-commissioners who have to decide whether to approve or deny Carrier Group's special permits, applications or exceptions. And I also find it troubling that as a Realtor, Commissioner St. James has on her personal Caldwell Banker website, Carrier-built homes listed for sale and shows that she's the contact agent for multiple new buy Carrier homes in Cromwell and Burlington. Please explain how any of this is not a conflict of interest and how the interests of residents can be fairly represented when deva- developers are so familiar with the commissioners. For these reasons, I'm encouraging a no vote on this development. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Edward Gilardi. I live at, uh, Lendship, SoCal. Been there for like thirty-four years. And a few things about this development have me concerned. One thing I'd like to talk about is this CROG letter that was issued about, uh, Carrier won an award or something, it sounds like. Actually, just complying with the local requirements of the, uh, Farmington, uh, Wedding Zoning Wetlands Commission, that kind of thing. It's not like they've done anything great. And what's even more surprising to me, the people who signed it. I find out that the chairman of this commission, by trade, is an occupational therapist. Don't see what that connection has to do with environmental issues. Another person on the commission is this, uh, Jacob Dalton. He graduated from college June of twenty-two. So how much experience does he really have in these kind of, uh, circumstances? Under his own personal, uh, resume, he's been five years as an interior designer. The only person that makes any sense in this whole letter is the Vice Commissioner, uh, Mr., um, Rice. He works on some kind of conservation committees and stuff in Spinsbury. So you have two out of three people, who you look at their background, don't seem to have any strong bearing in this kind of equipment or this, or this kind of circumstance. So I, so I don't see the real value of this letter. I was really surprised when the lady from S O R started, uh, started talking about efficient, uh, road. I did the road count there. There were a hundred and thirteen cars in two hours that had to wait twice for the light to change on one seventy-seven and, uh, Maria Road. Each cycle of the light is about thirty seconds. You're going to tell me that people wait two cycles to go through there and the two-hour period is efficient? There's also no mention about the, uh, forty-one cars that turned off a Maria Road to go through Coke Farms Road to get to Plainville Avenue. And I'm assuming that if there are more cars going to be there, there'd be more cars coming through Coke Farms Road to save the, uh, light, uh, disturbance on one seventy-seven, uh, Maria Road. Now she talks about, you know, setting her things by looking at some kind of calculation at thirty different areas. Well, I don't care about thirty different areas. I care what happens in my own neighborhood, real time, real facts and figures. And for her to do some kind of a calculation saying that, well, this is the average and this is the standard, well, we don't care what that is because what happens what we're, we lives. That's what's important, not what happens in thirty different areas around the country. Uh, another thing I'd like to take issue is I've been a volunteer firefighter for, uh, ten years and I'm social firefighter for another thirteen years. Now I spoke to the fire chief at Texas Hose in Unionville and he would be the, uh, firehouse that would respond to this area if there's ever a fire issue. And he told me, nobody from the Carrier Group has ever talked to them about, uh, the hook and ladder truck. The hook and ladder truck itself is forty-two feet in length. Actually, it's longer than that. And it has what they call stabilizers. Stabilizers are these legs that come out from the side of the truck is a width of eighteen feet. Now, I don't know if Carrier has contacted the fire marshal or the, uh, Farmington Fire Services. Was that truck really able to go into those parking lots and set up as a, uh, good, uh, piece of equipment? The important thing with the, uh, cook and ladder truck, it has a hose application on the very top that could shoot down water in case there's a catastrophic fire on these, uh, excuse me, on these, uh, housing clusters. Now, the, uh, problem with that is the trucks can't go up the road. They have to stay on firm property, so they gotta be shooting from the street. Here you have a ninety-six-foot ladder shooting directly spraying right on top of the houses if they're on fire. And there's no way for the truck to go around to the side or anything like that. So is this essential piece of, uh, fire equipment being denied access because if we don't know they've been tested or not to be in these, uh, prescribed areas? I'm just thinking that a, a, a ten-unit, uh, parking lot is going to be of a small size. I don't, I know it'd be effective or not, but has it been tested or has it been tried? I know if they, uh, contact the fire marshal or probably the, uh, fire administrator in the town hall, they could get some information about that. But, but that's something that should be looked into. Now, the other thing is the housing supply. I don't know, if I'm not mistaken, I think we already have twelve hundred, uh, housing units approved for even with the moratorium right now for Farmington. So if the housing supply is not increased by twenty-five, it's not a great addition or subtraction for what's already available. So is it really necessary to have twenty-five more, uh, housing units that's going to destroy the wetlands? He's going to build seven, you know, you have seventeen acres that he's going to build on, which is like nineteen percent. Was it risk, risk for, uh, nineteen percent of the, uh, wetlands to destroy the other eighty? Because once it's just changed, there's no way of bringing it back. So it's like a one-way street. There's no coming back from it. And then again, I'm a little surprised about our chairman. And that's nothing personal, but she's a, uh, contact person for all these different, uh, carrier projects, homes and everything else. I just can't see how, cannot be a conflict of interest. She should be recruited from voting on this project because she has a direct conflict of interest with her, uh, feelings as a Realtor for Carrier and on this project. Uh, another thing, I don't know how the planning, zoning actually works. But going through seventy minutes back in, I think, October and November of twenty-two, Mr. Carrier voted on his own applications. I don't know if that's true or not, but I think that's something that should be looked into. I don't know if the commissioner can, you know, vote on his own application for approval or not. What is that normal way of doing business? I don't know, but I think that's something that should be clarified. Thank you for listening to me and I wish you all a good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Who's in the room?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Mary Writings Ward. I'm the president of the Paquabic River Watershed Association. And we are the largest subregional basin of the Farmington River watershed. Tonight, I would like to share a communication from the Farmington River watershed. Dear members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, these comments are provided by the Farmington River Watershed Association, FRWA. Founded in nineteen fifty-three, FRWA's mission is to preserve, protect, and restore the Farmington River and its watershed through research, education, stewardship, and advocacy. Due to the outstanding water resources in Farmington and our local communities, the Lower River and Salmon Brook were designated Wild and Scenic in March twenty nineteen. This added sixty-two point eight miles to the National Wild and Scenic Rivers System, which less than one percent of rivers nationally are recognized for. Much of our monitoring outreach and restoration is directed at quantifying and reducing pollutants in the Farmington River and its tributaries. The primary source of pollutants entering the river is non-point source pollution from stormwater runoff. Impervious surfaces such as rooftops, driveways, and lawns increase the amount of polluted stormwater significantly. Overall, this eight-five-one-eight Moraya Road lot is less than ideal for development and has been considered by the Town of Farmington to be protected as open space and listed on the town's property acquisition list since two thousand and eleven. This parcel is vital open space for the town that is responsible for absorbing and conveying precipitation and floodwaters. The Town Environmental Resource Inventory of Farmington lists this area as regionally significant for groundwater recharge, flood flow alteration, and wildlife habitat. The proposed level of development in this plan will increase impervious surfaces in the wetlands and upland review areas and increase flooding issues while also, and this is really important, and it goes to some of the comments that I heard from Commissioner Ratcliffe and others, but fragmentation, and that's a concept that a lot of us environmentalists are hoping will become more identified at the local level. So fragmentation, when we're looking at individual parcels and not required by your own regulations to really look at the larger regional picture. So the flooding issues will end fragmentation, and they'll negatively impact the biodiversity of the area. Developing this parcel will negate the environmental values of its wildlife habitat and increase water quality and quantity impacts. Healthy, undisturbed floodplains are extremely important as they provide floodwater storage, reduce flood velocity and peak flow, reduce erosion and sedimentation, and provide climate change resiliency. Floodplains benefit water quality by filtering nutrients and impurities from runoff, processing organic waste, and moderating stream temperatures. Floodplains help maintain healthy ecosystems and fish and wildlife habitat. The Moraya Road lots, eight-five-one-seven and eight-five-one-eight, are an important flood control property for the Paquabic River watershed via the Scott Swamp Brook. The Paquabic River is already a heavily polluted waterway from stormwater runoff in upstream communities, including Plainville, Bristol, and Plymouth. Our concern with developing this parcel is that Farmington will exasperate flooding issues on Moraya Road and further downstream roads known for flooding, including Meadow Road and degraded water quality. FRWA is concerned with the proposed cluster subdivision plan in a basin that is critical for flood control and wildlife habitat. This area has a vernal pool, is home to Scott Swamp, streams, woodlands, flora and fauna, and routinely floods. Scott Swamp's is a very diverse area with populations of blue-spotted salamanders, northern leopard frogs, wood turtles, box turtles, and spotted turtles, all species of special concern, as noted by Quinn Ecological. FRWA concurs with concerns raised by engineer Steve Trinkus in his comments. The following three are noted. There are failures to follow guidelines in two thousand and four C T Deep Stormwater Quality Manual and two thousand and two Guidelines for Soil Erosion and Sediment Control. Additionally, C T Deep is the final draft stages of a new Connecticut Stormwater Quality Manual, which has updated stormwater control guidelines. We encourage these new recommendations to be integrated, especially due to flooding issues documented in this area. Overall runoff from the cluster subdivision development will increase despite all the stormwater control measures that will be installed. All stormwater should be addressed on-site. The town's Plan of Conservation and Development states that drainage plans from Moraya Road should generally contain detention in order to provide sufficient flow for the brook and its associated wetland systems, as well as to prevent further incidences of flooding on Moraya Road. The capacity of the proposed stormwater best management practices to filter the stormwater runoff adequately may be overestimated. It is likely that increased non-point source pollutant loads will discharge to the wetlands. All of these conditions would contribute to flooding, silting, and degraded water quality in this important wetland and wildlife area of the watershed. FRWA urges the commission to encourage utilizing the guidelines in the new draft C T Stormwater Quality Manual and to reduce the development concentration and levels of impervious surfaces proposed in the cluster subdivision development. As required by its longstanding mission, FRWA's focus is solely on potential impacts to the Wild and Scenic Farmington River and its outstanding qualities, such as its well-known scenic beauty, abundant recreational opportunities, and strong water quality. We trust the town will protect their open spaces for the benefit of the Farmington River, the Paquabic River, the community, and future generations. Thank you for this opportunity to comment and your consideration. Respectfully submitted, Amy Petrus, Executive Director, and Laura Hart, Conservation Director. I also have a letter from the Paquabic River Watershed Association. The Paquabic River Watershed Association has concerns about the development of the Scott Swamp property and submits the following comments for your consideration. PRWA has been working since nineteen ninety-three to protect and restore the water quality in our watershed. Our fifty-eight square miles of land, three subregional basins, and thirty-two local basins drain into the Wild and Scenic Farmington River. The local basin known as Scott Swamp had its upland most point in the Moraya Road property proposed for development. The headwaters of Scott Swamp Brook are on this parcel. There are many ecologically significant and notable features of this property and the brook itself. Three Town of Farmington planning documents recognize the significant contribution of the Scott Swamp ecosystem and natural resources. The Environmental Resource Inventory and Plan for the Town of Farmington identifies Scott Swamp as regionally significant. Going on to note, the Scott Swamp Brook watershed and its associated wetlands provide important functions and values on both a regional and local scale. The most significant are groundwater recharge, flood flow alteration, and wildlife habitat. The second report, the Town of Farmington Plan of Conservation and Development, lists the local basin as an important town asset. Identifying Scott Swamp Brook as an important town asset. The Plan of Conservation and Development also notes Scott Swamp Brook is classified as having B slash A water quality. And D has set a goal of achieving Class A water quality in this brook. State resources and efforts to restore it to Class A water quality will be undermined and adversely affected by the proposed development, which will fragment the property both on the east and west sides and create an edge effect diminishing biodiversity. The third Town of Farmington report is the Land Acquisition Committee, which has targeted Scott Swamp for conservation. In addition to those three Town of Farmington reports, a regional effort led by the Metropolitan Conservation Alliance in their report entitled "The Farmington Valley Biodiversity Project: A Model for Intermunicipal Biodiversity Planning in Connecticut", collected and mapped comprehensive data on the biological resources within a seven-town area and mapped priority conservation areas for incorporation within each town's Plan of Conservation and Development to help guide municipal planning and decision-making regarding land use. Their regional approach is derived from research indicating, and this is a quote, "Although careful planning can mitigate some of the adverse impacts of such development, most planning occurs on a site-specific scale and does not consider the much larger landscape-scale picture." Ironically, the land review process currently practiced by most municipalities may actually foster fragmentation by considering too small an area in the review process. The transitions that are occurring within our landscape today are much more permanent than past changes, and they do not accommodate our native biodiversity." So that is a quote from the Farmington Valley Biodiversity Project. The report goes on to cite Miller and Clemmons, who say, "The few wildlife species that have adapted to such changes are opportunistic and/or invasive species which thrive at the expense of a more diverse and balanced biological community." The loss of biodiversity, among other detriments, harms human health. And there are examples of this, in particular regarding the lime tick. Without biodiversity, it jumps more to deer and to humans. So that's just a simple example, not simple, it's an example that has been well researched. We need biodiversity for our healthy human habitat. The Farmington Valley Biodiversity Project concurs with the Environmental Resource Inventory and Plan of the Town of Farmington in identifying Scott Swamp as a priority conservation area. We urge you to consider these plans, along with Farmington's Plan of Conservation and Development and the Town of Farmington's Land Acquisition Committee in making your decision. So talk about flooding, talk about biodiversity, fragmentation. And then we also had the current president of the Farmington River Watershed Association. And she looked at the plans and wrote up some questions and comments. And this is very different from what the Noggett Valley Council on Government or the Capital Region Council on Government did for their review, because I talked to both of those agencies and the Capital Region Council on Government, they did not perform a review of the plans or documents for this proposal. They had a conversation with Shannon and asked some questions and wrote their letter. So that was the process that was followed by our councils on government. I'm not sure about all of their role because their plans of conservation and development identify Scott Swamp as a priority conservation area. It is regionally significant in the plans, but as we know, the current regulations look at things site-specific. And that can be that is not necessarily the best way to maintain our environment. So I would like to share with you the comments that Carol Noble had. And she says, "Dear Shannon and Bruce, thanks for meeting with me to review the filed documents on the proposed Moraya Road Cluster Subdivision. Also, thanks for adding the available test pit groundwater monitoring data to the website. Please consider the following comments for the record." And she, this correspondence is dated February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. You know, all well after the inland wetlands approval. "You indicated that the applicant is preparing additional hydrologic information at the town staff's request. This seems crucial to the design as it appears that a number of the proposed home lots are designed with extreme fill quantities, i.e. the bottom of foundations are indicated above the existing grades." Exclamation point. "The proposed plan is specifying foundation drainage that discharge directly to both the stormwater Swiss system, which may take up stormwater treatment volume, or directly to the adjacent lowlands, which may increase downstream surface water flows in FEMA-mapped special flood hazard area. Groundwater infiltration is an important consideration, which does not appear to be incorporated into the design since it appears that both foundation and curtain drains are piped either directly to stormwater system or to the adjacent floodplain and wetland. For example, the TP four data seems to indicate measured groundwater tables at approximately three eighteen." I don't know what all this stuff really means, but I know that Carol is an environmental engineer, and she's raising these issues about the drains. "These lots are not the only areas of concern. Groundwater infiltration should be effectively considered and potential discharges clearly evaluated. Thank you for the follow-up to be sure the proposed plan groundwater discharges and impacts are understood. On the plans, the floodplain is shown to be impacted by the construction of a berm for the stormwater system. The proposed stormwater pond volume is not considered floodplain compensatory volume because it is being used up to offset the increase in stormwater from the developed site. Further complicating the evaluation is that the plans do not provide clear topographic information to establish the existing grades." information to establish the existing grades at the proposed impacted area. According to our conversation, the applicant had the project site flown for an aerial survey and indicated portions of the site where the tree cover was too dense and were supplemented with field survey. However, the specific spot elevation information is not provided, and even the two-foot contours are not clearly labeled. The main point here is that there needs to be enough detailed information provided to clearly show the proposed development will meet the floodplain regulations. In addition, the state review letter indicated that floodplain and wetland areas should be avoided for the development with respect to protected species. There are drainage concerns also, which are regulated under the subdivision code. Portions of the side and rear lots are draining directly to the adjacent wetland area without benefit of water quality treatment. You indicate that the subdivision will be subject to an integrated pest management plan for stormwater protection. This is not enough and basically unenforceable. As residents develop their lots with fences, sheds, and pools, these plans are typically filed away and forgotten. Structural protections such as swales should be used for developed areas, not draining to the stormwater quality basin. Thank you for your consideration. If possible, please provide an email response when the groundwater and topography information becomes available." Shannon, and then information was provided to Carol, and she wrote a subsequent email based on that. "Dear Shannon and Bruce, thank you for providing the additional data from the applicant for Moraya Road Lots 8517 and 8518 proposed development. I would appreciate if these concerns are clearly documented in the P and Z meeting record. The recently received additional geotechnical report data includes three additional points of data and groundwater measurements. The groundwater was measured at approximately 6.3 feet above proposed foundation bottom at Lot 5, approximately 8.5 feet above the proposed foundation bottom at Lot 7, and the approximate grade as the proposed foundation bottom at Lot 3. The other available geotechnical data appears to be data from March 2021. The March 2021 data appears to indicate other areas where existing groundwater elevations are significantly higher than the proposed bottom of foundations. Based on the data interpolation, it appears that there is significant proposed groundwater drawdown for other proposed foundations. Based, the groundwater influence should clearly be understood to protect both the residents and the adjacent floodplain and natural areas from additional impact for both water quality and quantity considerations. I understood you to indicate that no pumped groundwater systems would be allowed per the conditions of the wetland permit. However, if the gravity flow discharges are not keeping up with rising groundwater elevations, it's likely that residents will need pump systems. The CT Stormwater Quality Manual states, "An elevated water table poses several design issues. The primary issue is the loss of storage and retention capacity in online treatment structures. If seasonally high groundwater exists above the bottom of an unlined pool or basin, groundwater will drain into the structure and fill or displace volume that may have been intended for retention. If a treatment practice is constructed below the seasonally high water table, the loss of storage capacity should be accounted for in the design, or engineering controls such as liners and/or underdrains should be considered. An elevated water table may be advantageous for some treatment practices where a permanent pool of water is desired, such as stormwater wetlands. However, small separation between the bottom of a treatment structure and the water table may result in inadequate pollutant attenuation and treatment in the unsaturated zone. The potential for groundwater pollution due to stormwater infiltration is an important consideration in the design of stormwater treatment practices. The proposed de-watering underdrains do not appear to have adequate filtering or structural protection cover." As indicated in my February 24th email, concerns, there are drainage concerns, which are regulated under the subdivision code. Portions of the side and rear lots are draining directly to the adjacent wetland area without benefit of water quality treatment. So here you see Carol is repeating her concerns because they were not addressed from February 24th to March 6th. And I think this is also relevant to, you know, the inland wetlands not having all of this information. And you indicate that the subdivision will be subject to an integrated pest management plan for stormwater protection. This is not enough and basically unenforceable. And she goes on to repeat, "As residents develop their lots with fences, sheds, and pools, these plans are typically filed away and forgotten. Structural protections such as swales should be used for developed areas. It appears that most, if not all, of the proposed impervious area is directly connected to the stormwater system. Best practices include allowing for the site-proposed impervious areas, especially roof drains, to infiltrate prior to the stormwater management system." So that's a really strong recommendation because best management practices, best management practices in stormwater management, I think, are just, you know, the basic minimum requirement. "The site soils and proposed fill areas appear to be adequate to incorporate some of these practices. Proposed rear and side lot swales, per the previous comment, would also help to manage stormwater and potentially groundwater for onsite infiltration prior to the discharge to the adjacent FEMA special flood hazard and low areas. Thank you for your kind consideration. Sincerely, Carol Noble." So, that concludes my comments that I wanted to share with all of you commissioners, just to be aware that there seem to be unanswered questions. There's a larger concern about fragmentation, and your town's documents have clearly listed this as regionally significant and a prioritized conservation area. Thank you for your consideration and your concern for the wild and scenic Farmington River.
Thank you. Anyone else that's in person that wishes to speak in favor of position of this project?
Good evening. My name is Kay Higgins. I'm at 15 Tall Timbers Drive. I just have a couple of things here. One is that I'm not an expert in any of this, so a lot of it goes right over my head. But one thing that has been bothering me throughout these discussions of the proposal is it's something that my neighbor brought up to me, which was, there are trees on that lot right now, probably close to 1,000 trees easily, that are going to need to go away in order to build on those lots. Each of those trees uptakes how many hundreds or thousands of gallons of water in a rainy season? Where does that water go when those trees are gone? And has that been taken into consideration as part of the metrics on runoff? Right? Has it? I don't know. I'm not an expert. But can any of you tell me if it has? Can you guys tell me if it has?
There will be a response.
Okay. Okay. So that's my question. Did anybody take into consideration the water that's taken up by the trees right now? The trees that won't be there. One other thing I wanted to note was that in one of the traffic studies, it was stated that there had been no accidents. I think it was this year or last year. And that I believe, because I hear all the crashes that happen at the end of my street. However, in previous years, I've got, thanks to another neighbor, I have 20 pages of accidents and motor vehicle stops over the course of, oh, let's see, from 2017 to 2022. Over those years, some years we've had one accident, two accidents, those were the COVID years. But before those years, three in 2019, six in 2018, and nine in 2017. It's not a not-busy road. It's not a super-safe road. And adding traffic to that road is just going to make things more complicated. I don't, I don't, I don't enjoy hearing the crash and woo-woo and then going out and seeing, you know, car parts and body parts all over the road. So those are the, the things that I wanted to add to the information that's been given here and to ask for some of that information to be bolstered. I've heard a lot of really, really informative speeches today, and I thank everyone who was involved in this process.
Thank you. All right. Final call for folks that are in the room.
The voting's being continued for two weeks ten. I, I don't want to have to know if there's anything in the moment.
Okay. So, Shannon, since 10, right?
That's the commission's choice as to whether or not this would be continued, but there are folks online we haven't checked in with, and there's also written correspondence that I need to enter into the record as well.
And then there was documentation received, right? From the applicant.
So there was documentation received today.
I think we need to take our time, right?
Or go to 3:00 AM. Can we at least hear online, though? I'm not.
Right. I mean, I think, so normally we would hear all of the correspondence, and then you folks would make a decision, ask, decide what your next steps are and lay that out accordingly.
Or you may submit it in writing, but yes, sure. All right. So, anyone else in the room right now? We're good? Okay. So we have many or how many folks?
Well, I don't know how many. So we haven't had, so anyone that has called in regarding the Moraya Road project, if you would like to make comments regarding this, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom, and you will be acknowledged to address the commission. So just, Madam Chair, just FYI, I've got 26 people have called in online. Not all of them are for this project, obviously, but yeah, I've got two hands raised at the moment.
All right. So we'll do the online and then first, audience?
Yes. The correspondence, there's like 10, 10, four or five, it's 10 or 11 pages. Okay. Dan G., you can unmute your microphone and address the commission.
Thank you. This is Dan Gabrie. I'm at 18 Tall Timbers Drive, and I'm going to try and keep it short because this is obviously going a long time. One, just in support of Mary and the comments she made from Carol Noble. Carol also sent me a note and just asked me to make sure that it was stated that on the 3/27/23 supplemental submittal data, it's still incomplete to know how the proposed groundwater controls, footing drainage, curtain drainage and such, will impact the stormwater treatment system and floodplain, not to mention how it's going to protect residents' basements. She said, "The latest carrier consultant response indicates the ponds are oversized, but the model hasn't specifically addressed the proper groundwater discharges for the storm, required storm events." So I'd like to get that on the record. And also, with regard to the traffic, and you know, I sympathize or empathize with Mr. Girardi and the fact that we're more concerned with ourselves and the fact that you have to wait multiple lights to get onto Plainville Avenue off Moraya Road. But it was stated by Emily that institute, or institutional standards and state standards indicate that one, one car per house is enough. And I think that it's worth noting that those standards are representative of an average of the entire state population, which means you've got some houses with no garages, a lot of houses with one-car garages, some houses with two-car garages, and some houses with three-car garages. And that average is going to be very different than this area, where all of the houses have at least two-car garages, and in some cases, three-car garages. And so to say that we're going to make the state standards, or the industrial standards, or whatever she wants to claim, and only have one car come out of this, the area with all those two-car garages, I think is begging the issue a little bit. And, and it does lead to what Mr. Girardi said, that you can watch the light at the end of Moraya Road, and you have to wait through two lights just to get around the corner. That is going to cause traffic to turn down Coke Farms, and it is going to lead to more frustration as the number of cars and the number of lights increases. That's all I have, and thanks for your time.
Gary Higgins, your hand, you can should be able to unmute your microphone. Name and address, please.
Yes, thank you. Can folks hear me?
Yes.
All right. Gary Higgins, 15 Tall Timbers. And just, you know, in seeing this unfold, I just really reflecting deep concern about the conflict of interest and overall, it does not seem to be fair and balanced in terms of the amount of work that's been done in the background for this, in terms of the studies and the impact on the environment, but also the traffic. And as such, I do not see the overall fairness in moving forward without proper and thorough review and likely further state oversight. This is, in terms of the traffic, as Dan has just stated, but also some of the concerns about flooding does not appear to have been taken into full account. We can just enter that, and I will cede my space for others to speak.
Thank you.
Bruce Chadwick?
Yes, good evening, everyone. This is Bruce Chadwick, 9 Tall Timbers Drive. Thank you, everyone, for your comments this evening and for the commissioners' consideration of all those comments. I want to make a couple comments on the traffic and the sidewalk issue that I'm, to be honest with you, I'm pretty disappointed in staff's review of that and not trying to, and, you know, investigate that a little bit clearer and a little bit more deeper. Let me take you back on sidewalks a long time ago, when I was on the town council in 1995, '96. We had a proposal in front of us to extend sidewalks from the current sidewalk at Town Hall all the way to the Rails to Trails. That was basically newly constructed at that one time, and therefore connect the neighborhoods up in the Highlands into the Rails to Trail system and to Town Hall and the whole complex. Unfortunately, that was not approved for various reasons, and I think that was a tremendous missed opportunity of the town to. to, in a very small way, bring neighborhoods together in a way that can be very beneficial to everyone involved. So I know it's difficult to get over a culvert. Um, uh, seems like the, uh, the culvert over the, the Peculonic River on Meadow Road seems to work pretty well. There must be a way to be able to do that and I would seriously ask that the town staff and the commission revisit that issue and see if there's some way that they connect the neighborhoods that currently exist there, including Tall Timbers, Old Pond and Coke Farms, um, with this proposal. On traffic, um, no traffic calming techniques are available. I find that a little hard to believe. You've heard some of my neighbors talk about that tonight. Um, we've done a lot of traffic. I mean, Judson Lane is a classic case of traffic calming techniques have been put into place. I know this is a different situation with an existing road, but that's something I would also ask the commission to consider as well. Um, and finally, I just wanna make sure I'm clear on the homeowners association responsibility for maintaining the water detention areas and other, other, uh, water issues relating to this project. And, uh, I'd be very interested in connecting with Attorney Hoab to talk about that and to ensure that there, uh, are, there are procedures in place that that is, uh, maintained and that the homeowners association is duly represented and that, um, if there's any issues with those types of issues that cause, um, detriment to the neighborhood, including our neighborhood, that there be discussion and if there's any, um, cause of action that can be brought up against them, then that may be a solution as well. And then they address, um, Mr. Carlos's concerns that he, uh, expressed earlier in the meeting. So thank you for your consideration and I'm gonna close at that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Shannon?
Uh, if anyone else has called in online to offer comment regarding Maria Road, please raise your hand in the, using the feature in Zoom and you will be acknowledged to address the commission. I'll ask one more time, if you have called in to address the commission regarding Maria Road, please raise your hand. Madam Chair, there are no other hands raised at this time.
Okay. Thank you. So let's go through the correspondence.
Uh, yes. So we received, uh, written correspondence, uh, from Ms. Arlene Klein. Um, I believe she pretty much read her email to us and to the record verbatim. Uh, but I will place it, it's been posted to the website. It's been, um, shared accordingly with the, um, commission and developer via the website. Uh, this is an email that came in today from, uh, Benjamin Sarkony and Eric Roy in opposition. Uh, they are the gentlemen that own the home at one seventy-six Plank Road in Bristol and spoke at the last meeting. Uh, this details and expands on their concerns they expressed at the last meeting and puts it in writing. Aparna, Aparna Iyer, uh, email in opposition. North Hills cog letter, uh, received uh, at the end of last week, I believe, if I recall. And, uh, finding there's no apparent conflict and concerns with the regional goals and policies of the neighboring towns. Mike and Monica Bloom from Tall Timbers in opposition. And Kay Higgins, uh, noting items that she wanted, uh, on the record with respect to the last meeting. And an email we received from, uh, Sarah, I think it was, uh, sorry, Stacy Leskew on Reservation Road in opposition. And that's it for the, uh, the written correspondence that we received over the last two weeks.
Okay. Thank you. So we already decided, I know we have to formally vote on it, but, uh, based on my reading of all of you, that we're gonna continue. There are that, there, there are definitely a number of open items. Does it make sense, um, Shannon, to give an applicant a chance to respond to some of these?
Hmm, I would agree. I don't know, um, if we wanna hear from Attorney Hoab perhaps briefly and, um,
I'm just wondering.
No. Oh, uh, you're talking about continuing it? Did I, is that what I heard?
But we were wondering if, uh, we can start with, uh, you know, hearing from you, um, so some of the responses to some of the.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'm sorry. Sure.
Do you want, okay, I'm sorry. Did you want those tonight or you want those next meet? I'm trying to under, so.
No, I know. I'm trying to keep it together, right? Because we are getting a lot of information, right?
Correct. So do you want a consolidated response at the next, next meeting? So I just didn't, we wanted to hear from Attorney Hoab with respect to.
I, I'm sorry, um.
It's all you and I am doing this.
I know. It's, I'm trying to be efficient. I just asked Mr. Dale if he's ready to respond because much of this is, to me, engineering intensive. And so he, I think he's prepared to respond and it might be beneficial for the commission to hear, you've heard them now and he can respond and you can kind of hear the response and then make a determination whether you still think there's something that needs to be done. I can respond to Mr. Chadwick's inquiry about the maintenance of the property, which is in the plans. So, and listen, it's already been a long night with a lot of testimony. So if you want to continue it, yes, the answer is yes from us. We're, we're, you know, uh, my preference would, for me personally, would be to see how far we forge ahead and see if we're in a position to close tonight. But, you know, that's the commission. That's not me.
Continue.
Continue. Continue. All right, Shannon.
Then it, it, so this is your choice.
Mike.
This is not my choice.
You comfortable?
You gotta make a motion in a second and.
We would like to continue.
Okay.
So I, I do think they should have the opportunity if they wanted to talk tonight before we vote.
Where do we cut it up though? Right?
I'm, I'm in favor of continuing till the next meeting.
I am as well.
Yes, no?
Um, I'm not gonna vote against continuing.
Okay. Even, so are we continuing it like right now or like, goodnight, everybody? Or are we saying?
We have to vote on it too.
Yeah. Or, or would you like to hear from Mr. Daley?
I think that's meeting, right?
Yes, that's what, what, hold on a second there. We, um,
What do you think?
An initial response. I mean, there, there's a lot going on. I definitely know for me, I need to look at the correspondence that came in, right? There's a lot going on. I'm very interested in the response to, uh, Mr. Twinkis, but I think that may be lengthy and then something was received, right, that we haven't read. So maybe my answers are all there. Um, do you? Kid, I would hate to limit this, but would we do like a your initial?
You know, I think I have maybe a better answer, but, but you tell me. I'm not forcing any position. I think perhaps staff also has been under siege with illness and going through this. We've all been working frantically. Uh, maybe the best thing to do, just continue it, give you more time, give staff more time, everyone take a deep breath, come back and hopefully this will, the third round will be closure.
Right. Um, and if we can get responses, you know, a little bit in advance of the next meeting, that would be even better. So like the Trink, Mr. Twinkis' responses are in?
Uh, they came in this afternoon or this morning. I, I lost track, honestly, but they came in today.
And we're really close with all that documentation, right? So hopefully by next meeting.
Well, I believe, so, uh, but I believe, uh, if I understand.
Uh, Tom isn't.
Uh-oh.
No, I believe we're continuing to the twenty-fourth is my understanding.
Well.
Mr. Daley will not be here at the, available at the next meeting. So yes, I'm a month out.
That's my understanding.
My kids will be out of school at that point. Oh, that's a tough time. Okay.
It's, it'll be April twenty-fourth. And we will need a written extension because the thirty-five days for the hearing expires on the seventeenth.
I can manage that.
I thought you might be able.
It won't be very long. It'll be a short, yes. So.
Thank you.
Of course. So do you want me to go back to my seat now? I don't think I helped much.
Relax.
All right, so we need a motion?
Yes, please. We do need a, a motion.
April twenty-fourth, right? I'm, I'll make the motion to continue the application from Carrier Group Inc. For twenty-five lots, cluster subdivision and lots, eight-five-one-seven and eight-five-one-eight Maria Road till the April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three commission meeting.
Liz Sanford, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Abstentions? All right, it's unanimous. So thank you, everyone that you mentioned today, that called in and we will see you all at the twenty-fourth, excuse me, April twenty-fourth meeting. Continue. All right. Just giving before, yes, we, we have, um, okay. Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
We're gonna take like a.
Can I take a few? Absolutely. Yep, we can take a quick five-minute break. Bye, everybody.
Five-minute break.
Yep. No problem.
I might need my time. Oh, I know, I know.
She can hang out.
Yeah. Oh. Yeah. Oh, I got it. I got it. And that's what they, yes, they were talking about us. And Bruce got it. And so people had called in on that first time they found one of that. But not here. But you have, like, relatively recently, weren't you? Wasn't that long ago? I have it in December, so I think I'm still. Oh. I know. No, I'm, I'm serious. Like, oh, I missed it. I have December. I think I still have like some level of that super, super immunity or whatever they call it. Both are excited and I was. So I got it the second we did the new town. And then, I didn't know where we were.
Well, yeah.
I got it.
That's all. So it got, it got. The student heads, when I got, well, probably I'm. No, we're kind of a loose. Maybe long term, but it's not like. Yeah, I know. And, uh,
I'm not.
Good sir, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the break. I hope. They had to use the restroom. And I'm glad that's getting continued until the twenty-fourth. Because then I'll be here for that. And I always. It's okay.
Need breath, breath on?
Yeah.
What's here?
Okay. Okay. Oh, and my screen.
I'm sorry.
Um, my screen went off about eight-thirty.
Mine, mine did the same.
Yeah, mine too.
Oh, really? Yeah, I, I, I thought it was just me and then Mike's went. And you were looking the same.
I thought it was mine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Luckily, we could yeah, see everything. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think mine went down. I have talked, I don't.
Yeah, I don't know if I touched something or if it just, it just cuts out.
Yeah. Go down here.
Literally just refilled my hand. But we guys.
Yeah.
It's like I needed that for a long time.
You were the scapegoat.
Yeah.
We're all waiting.
I'm sorry. I didn't say much about my vertical challenge.
Is.
Is that too?
So they're.
Oh, that's, oh, that's true too.
They're, um, listening, but that's, so they're just listening. Yep, so. Yeah.
We can get the high three.
Whenever you're.
I never, so I'm like, I'm bringing. Fully expected to be here till like eleven.
Walsh and Ratcliffe, both of you are voting on this one?
Yes. Let's go. Let's cross.
Back on the web list, please.
Back on the web.
All right. Shannon.
So. Yes, ma'am.
Let's, let's restart.
Yep, we'll restart. I didn't, did not stop the recording just because it makes my life easier. I don't, I don't forget. So, uh, um, just briefly, so old business, BB development, I've got the plan up. And so if you need anything else up as you folks are deliberating or whatever, let me know. I can find pretty much anything that's been up and discussed for this next matter.
I know the, uh, public hearing is closed, but is, uh, applicant online to answer any questions or?
Uh, they were online. Hang on, let me see.
Shannon, Jim Ziogas, I'm still here.
There you go.
Yeah, and Jay Meta is also on. So if there are, uh, our questions, then the commission can ask. We just, a reminder, there can't be new information, right? So that's.
From them.
Clarify, right, right? No new information, but if there's a clarification on something, then absolutely.
Correct.
Yep. It's all, it's all yours. Yep.
Write in. All right. So we looked at this development. The public hearing, public hearing has been closed. Um, handful of, uh, folks called in, um, so we're dealing with a existing site that was a devastation at some point. It's in bad shape. We have water that's bad, the earth that's bad. Um, so I guess with this project, there's an opportunity uh, because the, uh, structure will be raised to deal with the contamination even more. Um, it's big, right? The existing structure is thirteen hundreds per feet. The new structure, even though it was reduced, is thirty-three hundred?
It is.
I thought they brought it down closer.
Thirty, I think it was about thirty. It went from about thirty-eight hundred to approximately thirty-four hundred. A hundred to approximately thirty four hundred.
To your.
Right? Um. We're talking about five dispensers, does that mean company side?
Yeah, there's ten.
Correct, ten fueling locations.
Um. That, that's a lot, right, uh, we have thirteen gas stations. Three within a mile of this one. Um. Much smaller. Um. But all of you get to vote the same as I get to vote, um. Do you feel like you have enough information that we, we need to make a motion and, or can we just, is this our discussion?
So. It, you can, there's a couple of ways to do this, right, I guess if we're gonna be super technical, you make a motion in a second and then you do discussion. You then need to modify motions based on discussion, you can go through each commission member and kind of in general do a. A general discussion on thoughts all the way through. But yes, you ultimately need a motion in a second, and then I still would recommend additional discussion, just to deliberate, make sure everybody's on the same page, or at least provide that opportunity. And then can go and, um, and vote accordingly. And staff in the agenda review, I had tried to itemize as, as many of the things that were discussed at the last meeting as possible. Take them, dismiss, agree with them, don't agree with them, change them, do whatever you want with them, but I just tried to do a brain dump of things that had been discussed.
Yep. I already reminded, uh, the gentleman to my left. That they're gonna be voting. Um.
Can we get that on the record for everybody, please?
Sorry, uh, Mike Walsh and James Ratcliffe, the voting members in this application. Um, let's start on this site, uh, Matthew Bandle. You have, uh, everything you need to make the vote?
Yeah, I believe so. Um. The, the landscape.
Sorry, I'm gonna, I'm sorry, I gotta interrupt, so because the public hearing is closed. If Matthew is not a voting member, then unfortunately you can't participate in the deliberation at this point. So it doesn't matter which end you start at, you just, unfortunately, Matt can't participate in this particular conversation.
I guess it's on me then.
That's true, that's accurate, how about James, how about for you?
I forget to go first, this is crazy. Alright, um, so something that I raised in the, the last meeting when we, when we discussed this was the, not even necessarily the size of the building, but the size of the fact that there's ten pumps, five dispensers. Or five stanchions. Um, and the size of that overhang. So my question is, now that I've made, everything is kind of like moved, is there some room for negotiation with the applicant to potentially reduce the size of that?
So it.
To four, like say it's four and eight.
At this point, the commission would just need to make that decision if that's the condition that you're going.
That's all I need to know.
To do that.
I would like to lobby for that to be a little bit smaller. Because of the fact that the, there's, and you said this the last meeting was that there's five, uh, or there's one other gas station in town. That has. Five.
So there's one gas station in town that has six, it's Cumberland Farms on Route Six.
Okay.
Uh, towards Bristol, and then the others are at four or three. Uh. Pumps, so there was.
Okay.
Yes.
Um. And the fact, I mean, I've, I've driven up and down one seventy seven a lot over the last few weeks and just like trying to get a, a feel for it. And it being in the middle of a residential neighborhood, we had some of the, the, you know, public comment from the neighbors. Um, it's big. For a residential neighborhood, understood that it's zoned that way.
Right.
Right, and there needs to be something there, whatever is there is an eyesore anyway, so it's not that I don't want anything there. I just think that that is. Hmm, like huge. For that area. That's my, that's my feedback, if we can reduce the size of it, that'd be great. So I still think I would love to have something go there.
Mr. Walsh?
Thanks.
Um, I have enough information to, to vote, and, um, I'm on board with what James is talking about of. Requesting that the applicant reduce to four fills instead of five, for a total of eight cars instead of ten.
Okay. Liz.
Uh, I, I also feel ready to vote, I am in agreement with my other two colleagues. Um, four is much more reasonable. Um. Something else just came, went in and out of my brain, ah, didn't write it down. Um. Oh. What about the, uh. The turn lane from, uh, the left turn lane, um. Off of Plainville Avenue. Is that something that we could potentially make a condition of approval, or is that?
So. So my.
Is that written in, that is, that's where I saw it, yeah, hey, that's the one I circled on my. Okay, yes.
So they ultimately DOT is the reviewing authority, so we, we run into the. My recommendation to the commission from a freezing standpoint is that they be obligated to pursue it with the DOT.
Okay.
Um, and to keep the town informed of those discussions. Um, if we condition it and for whatever reason DOT comes back and says no, then. Right, they've got a problem, so.
Okay.
Um, but we can put forth that we require them to pursue it with the DOT.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, then I'm good.
Uh, I agree, I'm just gonna go on. I also agree with the last number of pumps. I still think this structure is too big. Um, I know we are gonna have dimmers. Um. I don't even know where I was the other day, but I drove back from the highway, I went home and I lived in Univille. And. I felt like all the. Um. Gas stations, all the businesses actually, the lighting was super bright except for the Mormon church, I was like, what the heck, only the church is complying. But again, it's my optics, I was tired, but, uh, I worried that there's gonna be a lot of pollution from the lights. I am most concerned about, uh, traffic. And I worry that people will, just like what we heard from, uh, about Pope Farms, I worry people will go to Lake Garda, which would be horrible. Those streets are super narrow, windy, there's no sidewalk. Um, if people start cutting through that neighborhood, I think that would be a problem or could be a problem. So that's how I feel, but, uh. Um, yeah, I guess we'll, we'll continue and then we'll maybe have another discussion. Good, yes, I'm good.
So I, I think this is a challenging parcel, it reminds me of the other favorite in town, the Shell Station of on Route Six in terms of. What's there is not great. And the alternatives are what we're looking at now these days, it seems to me that when you put in a. A gas station, this is kind of what you do. The initial proposal I felt like was too big, um. I appreciate what they did in terms of shrinking the building and. And putting in the turn lane in particular, but I agree that we need to cut down on the number of. The number of pumps and giving it down to four would be, um. Good as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I'm good. S- so thi- this one is tough for me. I'm not sure this one for me, I'm leaning it's not in compliance with our special permit requirements. Specifically number one and five, right, existing and future character. Inadequate safeguards for the adjacent properties. This is a really large five bay. Gas station. You know, I, I, I see the point of four, but that only reduces two cars. There's still a lot of light, they only reduced four hundred square feet from the building, so that's not a lot. This is really a residential neighborhood, if you. There's houses in residential all around that. Number three and four, right, traffic circulation, the road network. Traffic will be highly impacted, if you, if you look at Port Arlington Road there. It's pretty narrow. Um. Increasing traffic in this town. Especially in that residential neighborhood, in that area of town, Route seventy seven, you know, one seventy seven. Again, doesn't make sense, and for me, doesn't meet the standard. Of granting a special permit. As, as previously mentioned, right, it's. S- six pumps is the largest, this would be the second largest gas station, a lot of light emitting from that, from that, from this facility, all the way till ten PM at night. In a residential neighborhood, right, ten PM, nine thirty, ten PM residential neighborhood in Farmington. Is late. So again, that's, that's where I'm leaning.
I have my comments, but I'm not allowed to.
That's right. Excuse, alright, so we need, um. So it sounds like we. We decided that limiting to four is the right thing to do. Right, so the motion will do that. What are we doing with? The items that Shannon identified?
I mean, I think everyone was on board with the.
For.
Putting it to.
Okay.
DOT or the turn lane.
Okay.
For sure.
So we have two.
Again, I, I don't know the wording Shannon, but it's a. Show of best, best faith effort, if you will, I mean.
Yep.
It is kind of what it is.
Alright, so. We need a motion in a second?
Um, one, one other question before.
Yeah.
In terms of the, um. The timings, uh, you know, the various hours, you know, delivery before, after, things like that, do we need to, to specify those? Parti- in particular, or are those? Just, I mean, because we've got the, I know the hours of, of operation five to ten. And the fuel delivery, and that's all. Laid out.
So.
Number twelve.
So twelve, so eleven, twelve.
I'm saying, do we need to say that?
Fourteen, fifteen, I'll talk about hour, hours in some sense, whether it's lighting, operational, et cetera.
Right, I'm just asking, do we need to say that in a motion?
So. Be easy, so this was shared with the applicant, it was shared with all of you, unless you want to change something, you can. Add these in as your conditions. One through nineteen as presented in the agenda review. Uh, add to it or subtract to it. You don't necessarily need to read it into the record.
That's, yeah, okay, that's what I was wondering.
Thank you, Shannon.
Okay.
Were you offering to make?
You, I will remind you, there's a five, so number sixteen, it's a five, six vote for the landscape buffer at the rear of the property.
Yep. So.
Okay. Time to craft a motion. Okay. Uh. Let's see, okay, um, I make a motion, Liz Sanford, for the record, I make a motion to. Approve. The application for special permit at site plan. By BB Development LLC. For gas station with convenience store located at three sixty eight Plainville Avenue in a B one zone. With the following. Conditions. Right, number one through nineteen.
Sorry, it's twenty.
Twenty, oh, sorry, twenty.
Sorry about that page. Um. Mr. Seer added one and all of a sudden I just remembered it was.
Okay. So including, um. Conditions one through twenty, shared with the applicant, and the reduction of pumps. From five to four.
Yes, you did get it on.
Okay.
Alright, how about a second?
Ratcliffe's second.
Cool, okay. So we had a many discussion, right?
Yeah, I go through one more for my discussion, if anybody has anything to add, now that there's a motion and then.
I'll go this way.
Uh, I, I'm not sure if I'm the lone no vote here, but again. I, I don't think this. Application meets the standards for granting special permit. I don't think it's, the standard doesn't have to be narrow, it doesn't have to just fit over the line to grant this, I think this one clearly does not grant it. This is a residential neighborhood and we're gonna put a big gas station in the middle of it, I, I just don't think that's necessary, a lot of light, again, the traffic, as I just mentioned. I mean, I, I just don't think that's, this size is, is good for, for a gas station. Good.
Right, Scott?
Uh, nothing additional, no.
Uh, you know, I was. Listening to all of you, thank you for all the wonderful comments and thoughts. Yes, we have that I saw there now, but it has been that way for so long. I, I can't even imagine, uh, introducing this size. That, uh. Production or that facility there. You know, people are used to not having light, like you said. Uh, we always have traffic in town, it's just our town, right, but none of the roads are designed for traffic. That we experience, I do agree that, um. I feel that this is too big for where it is at. Um. Yeah. So there you go.
I, I will. Agree that it's a very, it's a hard, to me, it's a hard decision for me, I, I. See the pros of. Moving on from something that is old and decrepit and also contaminated.
Sure.
Get that process going, get the, get the, the soil cleaned out. But. It is someone's backyard, it's a lot of people's backyards, front yards, side yards, and, um. As for the traffic, there's, as they say, some will always complain there's more traffic. I mean, I don't go that way very often, but when I have, yes, you know, no one wants to sit and wait. So I guess I'm gonna have to make up my mind.
Alright. Thanks Liz, thank you for your honest feedback.
Um, I, I can appreciate a lot of what you guys said, I don't, again, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I did listen to the traffic engineer, I'm not sure how much more traffic this generates, in the sense of. I, I don't know, you know, for example, Matt, if you're going out to get gas and this isn't anywhere near where you live, you're probably getting gas closer to your house, you're cruising by, you're getting gases, what it is, so I'll put that out there, that's kind of. One of my thought processes there, um, the light concerns me, like you guys talk about, um. With that being said, it's somewhat a main road, so you know, you talk about coming home at night, traffic doesn't stop on this road at seven thirty at night. It's different than if you do live deeper into the Highlands and things like that, and so. I, I, I do absolutely want to be sympathetic of all that, I will say. It, kind of what you're talking about Liz, I agree it's been there forever, but I do view it at the end of the day as an upgrade, um, is, is where my mindset is.
That's fair. James?
Yeah, I mean, I think echoing every, what everybody said, right, tough decision. Um. But, I mean, I, I've, I think, you know, Mike said it pretty well, is that it's an upgrade on the, on the property. Um. It's a B one zone. Right, business is supposed to be there, whether or not it's a gas station or not. I mean, I, I mean, who are we to, you know, decide what, at what applications that come in? But it's zoned that way. So. I would love to put something there. And have another, you know, business in town. You know, whether or not a gas station is right, is not for me to say. But I think within the, uh, within the site. Zone that way.
Alright, so, does everyone know what we're voting? Alright, we're gonna do one by one?
Do you want to roll call vote?
Yeah.
I'm just gonna go in, in order.
Yeah.
Matt Hufner?
No.
Scott Hallstead?
Yes.
Liz Sanford?
Yes.
Mike Walsh?
Yes.
James Ratcliffe?
Yes.
Nina St. James?
No.
I don't know what happens with our joyous landscape.
Well, that's so.
Like to vote separately on that?
I'm gonna recommend that we vote separate on the landscape buffer then, yeah, because the landscape buffer would not pass wrapped in, so. The, the project passes. At a four, six vote as, uh, uh, sorry, four, two vote. So. We can pull this out and vote the landscape buffer separately.
You need any? Revisions?
Yeah, do I need to modify my?
No, it's gonna be a separate, whole separate vote, so you're gonna need to do another motion, I, I would do another motion in a second.
Alright.
On the solely the landscape buffer, so understanding that the project's right, so the project passed based on the vote that was just taken. So. Now the landscape buffer.
Okay, so.
So the landscape buffer, because it's, um. Uh, thirty feet. In width and the full firm height, can't, because they're accommodating existing vegetation. Right, so that's not gonna be the full five foot firm height all the way through. And at times right behind the building, right, it's not the full thirty feet. Because you only have thirty feet from the property line to the building, you're not gonna have evergreens right up on that. Right at the building, so. Um. There were small nuances that it wasn't a hundred percent compliant with that landscape buffer that warranted then the five, six vote.
Does have anything to do with the back of the building buffer or no?
Excuse me?
The back of the building?
That's what I'm saying, so between the building and the western property line, so between the building and the western property line, they, the thirty foot buffer to the north.
Okay, sorry.
Because there's such a large, um. Existing landscape area there and the detention base and that one was fine, it's this on the western side between the western property line and the, uh. The building and the, the parking.
Mm-hmm. Alright.
Because the building's right at thirty feet. Right, so it's. Really getting a thirty foot buffer in when the building's right at thirty feet.
Interesting, are you okay with me?
I think I can say it, I'm just not sure, do I need to say all the? Yeah, it's not. Yeah, it's not the application.
Number sixteen, right?
Okay.
Sixteen's the landscape buffer. And so you just use that as a, the benchmark that. Because it's narrower than.
Okay.
It's not meeting all the criteria of the thirty-foot landscape buffer. And so you're putting it forth as shown, so it'd be approving it as presented requires a five-six vote.
Okay. Really, I'm crafting, okay, um, make a motion. To. Approve. The. Um, non-compliant?
Just the, the, the lan- just the landscape buffer, so that's the three foot, the. The landscaping between the building and the western property line as shown.
Okay, I make a motion to accept the landscaping. Approved, sorry. Sorry. I gotta start again, okay, uh, I make a motion to. Approve the landscape buffer along the western edge of the property as uh, as presented, since it does not strictly adhere. To regulations.
Shannon, you good with that? Yes, okay, second?
Brackliff, second.
Okay, one, five-one vote?
Yeah, we can do.
We discussing?
Okay, sure, yes, you're right, we should discuss.
So. Again, I, I don't think this project qualifies for granting special permit. So not only that, now we're gonna change and sort of. Lessen our buffer requirements when this project is in a residential neighborhood. With a lot of light, as you all mentioned. So again, uh, in a lot, there'll be a lot more traffic, a lot more cars moving in and out of this property than there is today. Where there's no cars moving in and out of this property, so to reduce the buffer, again, I just think it's not warranted, and it's not something I'm in favor of.
So question maybe for Shannon, are we reducing the buffer, like, maybe I'm not sure I totally understand.
Technically, it's uh, correct, so the, the commission has the right to modify. The landscape requirements with a five-six vote, the commission has the right to allow the. The permission of that, right, so the applicants basically put forth that request because it's not in strict conformance with a thirty-foot. When you, we have a business zone adjacent to a residential zone. There are. A variety of buffer widths and then planting densities, and. As the width narrows, then berms are required or berm walls are required. In an effort to keep some of the existing trees, they. Had, they could not have a continuous berm all the way through, so. They've left in some of the mature deciduous trees and planted understory. Um, evergreens. In amongst, but some of those can be berms, some of them can't, right, we can't fill in against. That's the existing deciduous trees will kill the existing trees. Coupled with, with the building uh, right up at that thirty-foot line. You're not getting the benefit of a full thirty width. Thirty-foot width. Landscape.
Shannon, I hate to interrupt you, but the building is not at thirty feet, it's at thirty-five feet. We did move it.
No, I've got a setback that's showing that it's at thirty feet.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't think that's correct. It's a twenty-five-foot buffer and we moved it to thirty feet.
It's showing. Right here on the plan, is thirty feet.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is it's, it's a twenty-five-foot buffer.
No, it's not.
And the building's at thirty.
So the, the twenty-five-foot buffer requires a berm wall. And that wasn't.
That's correct, but I, I just.
So there's different, there's a twenty-five-foot buffer with a berm wall. There's a thirty-foot buffer with a five-foot height berm. And then there's forty-foot buffers and other, so it's a graduated. System of berms and walls.
Correct, and, and, and we moved the building five feet so that we could leave uh, some of the larger trees there. Uh, because to take them down would decrease the uh, the, the buffer to our neighbor to the west. Uh, we wanted to provide as much uh, coverage as we could. And by putting the berm in there, we'd have to take those trees down, which doesn't make uh, make sense in terms of thinking what a buffer should do.
Okay, well, we had looked at it when what the um. Arborist or landscaper that had come in and said thirty-foot and was discussing the berm. Uh, just a straight-up berm and not the berm wall, which is what's required with the. The twenty-five-foot landscape buffer, so.
Thank you.
So the, the, what did we vote on before though? Is that a problem?
It doesn't, no, it doesn't cha- uh, basic, because you were voting on the plan as presented, right, and regardless, so whether you're gonna call it a twenty-five-foot. Buffer that requires a four-foot berm wall, a retaining wall, you'd basically be mounting the dirt, earth end to a retaining wall. And again, all those trees would have to be taken out, and you have a five-foot space then between this retaining wall and the back of the building. Or do a thirty-foot berm that's not white thirty feet wide for the length of the building, but it can be thirty feet wide everywhere else. And again, you're not getting a five-foot berm everywhere. Because we're leaving some of the deciduous street rate, we're leaving some mature growth in and trying to get some understory growth. So you're getting both the tall canopy and the mid-height canopy.
Yeah, and that, that's what I'm trying to assess, is that by making the exception, is the actually increasing the quality of the? Buffer there or not?
I, I would argue it is.
I think I would.
That's, that's what I'm wrestling with, I understand what Matt's saying for sure.
Yeah. And, and I agree with what Matt's saying, I want it to be the best it can, I think this is the best option because you're keeping the full light trees.
Mature trees are. Going to absorb, you know, with the full canopy, they will. Absorb more light, I think.
I agree with this.
I would say this, a mature tree. The leaves are really high. In the air. What does that do for the first ten feet or first twenty feet?
They're doing, they're doing other plantings down below.
I'm not sure, right, based, is it twenty-five feet or thirty feet, like, we, we're getting different information.
As this is going on, so I'm not. I'm voting off of that plan, so I would expect to see exactly what's on that plan that was presented to us.
But the applicant is saying something different tonight, right?
It's the same.
No.
And, and.
We're not saying anything different. It's exactly what's on the plan.
I don't agree. And again, I'm, I, I, I think the buffer requirements and James, you said like, oh, what? We can't, if it's a gas station or not, like, that's not up to us, this is up to us. And we have these requirements on the books for, for like a reason, and we're trying to protect the existing neighborhood, now, like, again, I said, like, this is a neighborhood and. You agreed that, okay, gas station's okay for this sort of residential area, but I think we should really make sure we're protecting. The buffer. And I think the existing. Brags does that, and I think this new. Sort of five-six vote doesn't, that's again, just my feeling.
But ki- can, i- is it fair, Shannon, for you to summarize, not that you're a landscape architect or you're technical, you want to be. But a little bit of what's shown there, or at least zoom in a little more in the sense of. Uh, honestly, Matt, if we go back, they'll cut all the trees down and just put a, a bad-looking five-foot berm there. So I, I'm sure they would be willing to do that.
That was never presented to us. We, the meeting.
We can say they have to do that for the regs.
For, so. Mike, the statement Mike just made is correct.
So they'll clear-cut it all and put a five-foot berm, I, I just think that's way worse.
They could. So they have the ability, so if, if this stands that the landscape. The waiver for the landscape buffer is not approved. Then they would have to go with a twenty-five-foot. Landscape area, right, because again, we are not getting right up to the back of the building, because there's a proposed walkway here. Because there's an emergency grass out the back of the building, so. And I've got two dimensions that are showing from property line to building at thirty feet. So the alternative then is to do a. By code. Twenty-five-foot landscape buffer with what is referred to as a berm wall, so on the western side. They would berm, they would go from the western property line, you can see my, my cursor hopefully over my shoulder. Hopefully over my shoulder, that's better than that one over there, but. Um, so the cursor, so from the western property line up to the twenty-five feet, they would berm up. To an elevation of four feet. And then they would put in a retaining wall along. Uh, that edge. So, uh, just a block wall. And then they would plant all of this area, but all of the existing vegetation, all of the mature vegetation would have to come out.
Can you explain that part, wh- why does it have to come out?
Because you can't fill around the existing trees, you'll suffocate them and they'll die.
Because you have to bring it up five feet.
If you're putting in.
So if I'm standing on the ground where your cursor is, what am I seeing from the ne- from the neighbors? It, because there's no, like, it's just like a large tree trunk and then the tree, and there's no sort of.
So you want to know what it looks like now, or you want to know what it's going to look like? So, right now, they've got a whole arborvitae veg, uh, um. Arborvitae hedge along what's their eastern, the shared property line, okay, so this, this. Cur- curly Q line here. Is a tree line. And that is the uh, arborvitae. Hedge that's runs the majority of that property line, I can go to street view here in a second.
That, and that will stay no matter.
That'll stay, it's on their property. So now, when you come to the property line, right now, they've called out, right, I've got this call out says existing deciduous tree. Sixteen inches, uh, existing deciduous tree twenty inches, twenty-four inch. Right, of varying dimensions, and they've gone through and with their arborist prior to the last meeting. Tagged a number of trees and the surveyor went out and pulled the trees. To remain. There's a bunch of small understory trees. Um, like little sapling type things, some of it is just. Brush, underbrush. That will come out. In order to allow these new trees to go in, and somewhere on here, I gotta zoom out to see if. I don't know if the uh. The planting with all the colors on this, it takes a little bit to regen, I don't know, some of these are hemlocks, so some of, I've got some hemlocks, I've got some holly. So the AH is American holly, the Hs are hemlocks. Um, there's blue spruce that they're putting in, so any of the plants they're putting in back here will be evergreen. I want to say there's. Six feet at uh, at the time of planting. And where they can. Berm them up. They will intermix around these existing trees, they will then. Berm up. The. Uh, area so that the tree is planted on a. On a mound, right, so a mound that's at two, so rather that at elevation one hundred. I'm gonna pan the elevation, the tree at elevation one oh two, so it's already getting an ex- an additional two-foot. Height, if you will. Um, and the berm will be solid, so that's blocking the building, and the tree then is getting, I'm putting a six-foot tree in, but I'm putting it on a two-foot berm. So it's providing eight-foot of. Visual blocking. These are trees that the uh, landscaper has said should do fine in a shadier area. So that these evergreens um, should. Should work out fine. They, we did not go with white pines, because the white pines, they grow quickly, they get leggy, and they don't provide any of the screening mechanisms. So we wanted to go, he's got spruce and hemlock, um. And some other uh, varieties, that like I said, there's American holly in there as well and. Uh, a few others. So. The idea is that where they can get, if, I don't know that they'll ever get to five feet, because again, once you come up five feet and you slope down. Right, even if I come up at a two-to-one slope, if I came up to a peak at five feet and I come down at a two-to-one slope, I'm at. Five feet in one direction, that's ten feet, I got it twenty feet wide. Right? So you're probably not gonna get the full five-foot berm anywhere, because we want to keep so many of these existing trees, that's the plan.
I will say that holly is a nice thick shrub, so my neighbors got lots of it, it's very dense.
So it's bet, the buffer's better if we ignore our regulations in this.
In this particular case, because there's already an existing deciduous. Trees in place.
That's my read, Matt.
And in other cases where. It was a, as a brand-new virgin site, and there wasn't a, uh, a- any trees between this and a, and a neighboring residence, then, no. So. And that's part of the reason why. There's the ability to waive this, because in this.
Testimony from this neighbor too?
Uh, we don't from this name, not the immediate name, no, I think, uh, one or two down, first down. And some across. So this neighbor uh, did not. Fall in or right. At any point.
It's definitely because uh, you know, it's an acre-plus parcel. I don't understand why we cannot. I, whatever. It, the vote was done for the gas station, so now it's making the best.
Is there anything else I can do to help clarify?
I will just say, I'm a big fan of existing trees, these are, if these are healthy. Trees that are mature species. Uh, so many times you go past a construction site and they put in that two-inch sapling. And it looks like a stick. And if we're lucky, we get three leaves, and it looks like a stick. So that's why I, I am in favor of maintaining. The trees that are there, it stinks that we have to. Make it work. But. As Shannon said, we aren't in the middle of a cornfield, so. We do have some parameters, and I, I don't like adjusting rules for this and for that. But I think the, the benefit of the mature trees outweighs. This, in this situation.
Are they required to keep those mature trees? Can we make that a condition of approval?
Uh, it would be per plan, but yes, you can, you can absolutely specify that, it'd be per plan. At the same time. Um, there may be one or two that. As we get moving along, if there's vines, you know, so they won't clear-cut everything, but I can't promise you that. Two-year, like.
Sure, no.
Going fifteen trees, existing mature trees, I cannot promise you that. Okay, well, we had a few things that took place and, you know. Somebody driving the backhoe backed into one.
Yeah, I think that's.
Like there's.
Yeah, no, I get that.
But yes, you can make it a condition of approval that the intent is to ke- to keep the mature vegetation that's shown. As per plan, I, again, it's being approved as per.
Right, right, I get, that's my point, like. These mature trees could get struck by lightning and fall down tomorrow, right, and then. The buffer's less. So, because we're approving it to be less, but. If, if we think the buffer's gonna be better because of. This sort of, oh, um, that's fine by me.
But in that case, a tree got struck by lightning, the gas.
Uh, it's gonna go in the neighbor's house.
So, and the buffer, the plantings and the buffer. Run in perpetuity, so granted, we're not out, just so you get a sense from a. How staff monitors this going forward. So. It, it, assuming that this moves ahead. The plantings go in. Staff reviews and counts all the plantings that go in. And I'm pretty sure in the plan, somewhere is required a one-year warranty on the plant, on the plants. Regardless of the one-year warranty on the plants. The buffer and the plantings run in perpetuity with the plan. Now, that said. If an evergreen dies in the middle of the forest, are we going in the middle of the buffer area? No, we're not going and saying, hey, one of your thirty evergreens are dead. But if there ends up being, you know, somebody comes in and five years from now clears cuts it, or somebody, they. Whatever, something happens and they lose half the buffer because. Their landscape architect and their landscaper gave them bad advice and the trees really wouldn't do well here, or. Whatever, it's something else, whatever the next disease is, comes and attacks all the blue spruce, all the blue spruce die. They have to be replaced. It becomes an enforcement thing that we have to track and chase and whatever. Um. Generally, somebody needs something at some point along the way. And you don't get the thing that you need from the zoning office. Until your enforcement items are taken care of. Or it gets to the point where we have to find them, I don't think that would be the case, but there are. Mechanisms in place to try to ensure that the buffer as presented. Continues to function as a buffer. continues to function as a buffer five, ten, fifteen, twenty years from now. It's not perfect, but it's, there are mechanisms there.
Liz, you're good with the buffer conversation?
Mine?
James?
Okay, so we're gonna roll call vote. Okie dokie. Uh, Matt Hupfardner?
Yes.
Scott Hallstead?
Yes.
Liz St. James, uh.
You only get one vote for the two.
My, my maiden name is Saint John, which is, so.
All right, Liz Sanford.
Liz Sanford says yes.
Mike Walsh?
Yes.
You don't understand, those, the, the nameplates are for me at this hour.
Yes.
And, uh, Nina St. James?
No.
All right. Well, thank you.
All right.
And I do not have any planners report stuff. And if I can get my head above water, I'll get us back on track on our work session items. I apologize for the, the delays on some of that. Um, and Nancy Parent has been rescheduled for uh, April twenty fourth. So the game plan would be to meet at six thirty that evening here, for those that can.
Yeah.
Um, so it'd be April twenty fourth. Uh, Nancy Parent and get her in so that we can continue uh, those discussions and hear a little bit about the, um, housing authority and what they have to offer for the town of Farmington.
Um, certainly not to belabor this, but if you're not here April twenty fourth.
No, I'm not here, the, I'm not here the tenth. I will be back.
I was just concerned about the Maria road vote.
No, I will, I will be here the twenty fourth.
Okay. Gotcha. Everyone will be here the twenty fourth. Or that's voting for Maria.
Yeah.
Mike might be.
You, no, 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 we cannot, no. Um, yeah, I can't say what I'm I want to say, but.
We're recording.
All right.
So we have one more thing and then I can stop the recording.
That's fine. So let's approve our minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of, what was the date?
March thirteen.
March thirteen. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Twenty twenty three.
Second.
Favor, sorry.
I.
Posted. Sensions, okay, minutes are approved. I am okay to end the meeting now?
Hi, uh, yes, ma'am, just give me a second.
Eleven thirteen.